The Board of County Commissioners for Custer County meeting will come to order. To record show that today is March 6th, it is 9:00 AM. I would ask that people in the audience not livestream or meet while it is in session because it eats up a lot of bandwidth. And with that, I would ask Mr. Gary Hyde, would you like to lead us in pledge allegiance, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Would you roll call?
Yeah, Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flowerchair.
President.
Commissioner Candace, Vice Chair.
Chair.
Commissioner Prince.
Chair.
County Attorney Clint Smith.
President.
Deputy Clerk to the Board Lori Bistino, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
I do not have any, sir. No, do not here.
I have a question, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, I honestly don't know the answer, and they say never ask a question, but I know the answer to that. Can you amend the agenda on the day of the meeting on something that you are going to vote on?
It's a great question. The answer to that really is no. We could amend the agenda to put in an item of discussion, but to vote on, it's supposed to have 24-hour notice.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Audience introductions, ma'am?
I'll be with for the Senate.
Gary Hyde, remember.
Thank you.
Maybe we tweak the agenda instead of amend it.
And I don't believe we have any approval of minutes today, we will tomorrow, but not today, unless you tell me, know something I'm not aware of?
I thought we had two days, but...
It's on tomorrow's.
Tomorrow's. It's on tomorrow's. We got it.
Yeah, we did receive them.
I can all prepare for today.
Yeah, it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
You're ahead of schedule.
I think I have something to do tomorrow.
Commissioner Ides, Mr. Candace?
No, I get to be last today.
Oh, okay. Mr. Prince?
Thank you. I've met with the Whitmore Community Board, still some significant issues that are just kind of lingering on. I wrote a little more terse note than I normally would to Tom Duke, the contractor, excuse me, he's the archer chap, but he's the one we go to to get things fixed. And I caught him having both of you basically just kind of maybe add a little teeth to it. I was hoping that these lingering things really need to get resolved. They have some concerns about warranty issues, the one-year warranty for the building will be ending in the near future.
When is that exactly?
I think it's like, I think it may be. And I mentioned to him, and I'm certainly always a discussion, if I feel I told the right thing, I said, you know, it's an eighteen building, but we put a lot of, you know, upgrading to it. We have lots of buildings, and we don't have maintenance agreements with it. So I said, you know, let's try and get everything done we can before the warranty runs out, and then we'll just maintain it as we do all the rest of our buildings if that's acceptable with you. So that's basically what I told them.
Well, certainly, if those things were part of the new construction.
Right, the new construction thing was under warranty, but I think they were asking, they weren't asking for it, they were asking, will we have some kind of long-term maintenance contract? And I told them that I don't believe we have any with any of the other ones, we probably would not do it, just maintain it as we do as we need it, that's what I told them. So they seemed fine with that. Nana's gonna send a letter that we discussed about upgrading their library software, I told her we're not, we really can't do anything until we have facts and figures to discuss. I asked the President to put that on the agenda for when we go down there in the middle of the month, because if the, I think there are people will be there so they could be a part of that discussion when it occurs. I met with the economic development twice since the last meeting, just to discuss the things that are going on, and I think that's all I did.
Perfect, thank you. I'm just gonna report that up, sorry. March 1st, I did attend the medical clinic board meeting, and then March 6th, of course, we have a personnel policy workshop, it's today, and then I attended that, and then also the Republican Conference tonight, I worked in that as well. And then I wanted to mention to both of you that if you are interested in getting code red alerts sent to you via your cellphone or other device, get ahold of Cindy Howard, and she will put you on her all-call list, and then you should also receive an email confirmation about who gets it. On the, on the code red alert on your phone, it'll come over as an announcement, but you won't have any idea who that really is coming from, and you'll get an email or a text message, I'm sorry, and it will say on there if it's coming from dispatch or Cindy Howard or whoever. So if you just want to contact her, she'll be here tomorrow, so I just wanted to mention that to you as well. And that's all I have.
One thing I just thought about, I'm sorry, I'm disjointed. We had a smoker, I fired down at Whitmore, and it got down pretty quickly, and Ruth was at the meeting I had with Seth the other day, and I just complimented her on how great she looked in the firing person uniform. I just thought I'd throw that. She was Person of the Year and well-deserved at that.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Chris, Candace?
Couple things, after the meeting the other day, it won't have been a few days ago, a lot of things happened. Went up with Roger Squire up at Tower, checked in, puddled in the wind and cold in the little shed we have up there and looked at the antennas or mounting, discussed the option and the value of owning that piece of ground vice rent, you know, just paying a little bit for it, collecting it, and I think so. That resulted in a meeting that Gary and Roger went to see the guys on the L M Monday, last Monday, and Gary can talk to us a little bit about that meeting here in a minute. They are open to discussion, and it depends on whether they want to lose the revenue or want to give it to us. Today, making about three thousand a month right now, and we want to put a radio station and collar the springs on it, split it, split the cost maybe, or maybe we'll have to, we'll have to build a business plan to be determined. Also, we had that workshop with Rusty out there, and we talked about options to acquire more land. Turns out that, not surprised, we have as much forward future with what we've got out there, what was it, twenty-five years if we, especially if we annex some adjacent ground, we got to figure out what that'll be yet. And there are some horse trading we can do, it turns out we own a piece of ground down on Great Creek, we can horse trade with. Or we can make a park to, I think Cinderhoff had an idea way back in the seventies, make that a fishing fun place, put in with the bike trail or something, you know, or something to do with that, the economy, those things we can discuss in the future. I also called up the Rice family and told them that we were considering it, but it's the fall of that ground, doesn't look good enough to, takes a lot of money to build the berm to make sure the water wouldn't go in Washington landfill. And so that's still an option, if they sell it, then fine, if they don't, we can consider with other options. Also, we'll have to get ahold of, is it Pickle that has the golf course?
Sure, Pickle.
We need to get him to make a presentation soon, because Cinderhoff's got it listed, they were gonna go, I tried to get him to tell me where they signed the contract yet, but he said last week it would have closed, they would have had it on market, and it's up for farm or whatever use, so if we want to, and I know there's options, that Jerry was talking to all of us about perhaps hold making a first, write a fizzle on the thing or whatever, if this, if we get going down, but we need to do it sooner than later, we're gonna lose the opportunity if we want to. I'm prepping for the caucus too, here we go, hang on, only you guys get to sit back, you bums. Don't print that. There's slighers, they got it, I have to, seems like we just quit election, and here we go again. That's tonight, I'm looking forward to it, because it'll be fun in the end. Collecting cash, we had a, if you remember, we had a fuel pump problem out the airport, fixing that, also fixing the display, because you can't read it, got fried in the sun apparently. And we had one plane that actually drew gas and didn't have to pay a dime, and it had to be a friend of mine, so he lives in Virginia, and sent us a check, I gotta give it to Virginia, and it was about five hundred bucks even, so all that, so, you know, could happen.
Something happened to him, could it have happened to other people?
Yeah, absolutely. It was a glitch in how the trigger triggers the actual tally to go on, and it gets out of sync, and people can load it up, the pump works fine, and it brings out a receipt that says zero.
Wow.
It did.
I'm trying my car over there.
Yeah, or your lawn, bring your lawn mowers over there. So anyway, that'll be fixed, that's not a big deal, it's just something that has to be done, and they have the budget to cover it, so Alan will tell us about that later. And then...
Are they gonna lock that up until that gets fixed?
No, they reset it, and they're watching it.
So it's functional now?
Yeah, and, you know, they're still gonna consider other options to help, you know, I believe, and I've talked to Alan about it, presented, I'd like to get towns to help subsidize the fuel a little bit at some point, to bring airplanes in here and be competitive with Walsenburg. You know, it doesn't cost much for advertising, and I'll have to talk to the mayors, that's what Alan and I will do at some point, and see what their interest might be, to throw a couple thousand bucks at us a year and drive the price below Fremont County. Believe me, pilots will make the jog up here if, if it looks viable from a town point. And then they come into town, we're gonna have to reinvigorate the car out there, the loaner car, most of these airports, and see what that, he bosses, it's just something in the thought process right now. And Gary's gonna talk to us here in a minute, and we'll talk about what the plan is for her. It's good news, and that's all I got.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Counselor, any items, sir?
Just briefly, I did some more research concerning the Airport Advisory Board and the Weed Advisory Board, I actually had a menu memo that is working, but I'll have it for you tomorrow. The Weed Advisory Board is truly just an advisory board per statute, but we never established one, Kelly did a lot of research for me on this, and as far as she can determine, we never established the Weed Advisory Board by resolution. Things have been functioning for, it's 1996, I guess, without that.
On a handshake.
Yeah, but, and frankly, we do need to get the people, anybody who's expressed an interest in being on the board again this year, we need to, I think, either have a workshop or something and get started on that. With Shannon, she's gonna be here today, her new extension agent, I would like to talk to her about her position regarding being on that board, because Robin Young was, of course, I was informed that the CSU Extension didn't really want their extension agents to be on the Weed Board, but I'd like to know how she feels about that, and find out if it's something she's interested in doing. The Airport Board, I did some more research on that, it appears to me that when it was established as an Airport Authority Board back in 1994, with, you know, a whole separate political entity, when that was dissolved in 2011, there wasn't really any kind of transition, other than changing the name and taking away their authority to make decisions on certain things, but there was an Airport Fund that was already in existence that has just continued in existence, and as an advisory board, I'm not sure whether it should really even have, it's going to be an advisory board, if it's going to be a board like we talked about, then I guess they could have their own fund, but I think, well, it's just something we need to figure out how we want to handle that, and also, that was never created by resolution, it just looks to me, as far as I can tell, just transitioned into an Airport Advisory Board upon the dissolution of the Authority Board, not anything else happening. The other thing is I worked with Jackie Hobbie periodically, she has me write letters to people with the zoning violations that she has tried to communicate with, and they haven't been responsive, so I write a letter explaining what the, it's kind of a good cop, bad cop thing, explaining what the possible penalties are for not responding, dealing with these violations, some are more serious than others, I mean, the septic violations particularly, but, so I've worked on a number of those with her, over the past week or so, wrote letters, and we'll see whether that lights a fire. I guess that's all I've been doing since our last meeting.
I'll ask Alan, and he ought to consider it, because he was involved in that airport moving, all the transitions, to see what kind of resolution, I think they ought to bring it forward and consider what the authorities, the fund and all that think is, so...
Yeah, Jackie Hobbie actually has, she had a big three-ring binder on the airport going back a long way, and I borrowed that to look through it, because I think the bylaws they're operating under are still the bylaws that were adopted by the Authority Board instead of the Advisory Board.
Yeah, they need to clean it up.
So, okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I had a discussion with Shannon concerning the Weed Advisory Board, or whatever we call it, I guess.
Yeah, that's what it is by statute.
And she could certainly speak to that, but we have been working on that, we're also working on reinvigorating that committee, that board.
Yeah, there was one thing in there, the majority of the board has to be property owners in the county that have forty acres or more, and I frankly don't think there's a majority on there right now that has that much land, and so that's something that we should, by statute, that's a requirement, right?
Yeah, so we need to, I tried to dig up, I said something, dig up first of all, if they have set bylaws or whatever they're functioning under.
They do have bylaws, I actually worked with Robin a couple of years ago to get their bylaw, and the bylaws track the statute, the bylaws are fine, except they're not really following their own bylaws, because it talks about it has to be majority of proper, you know, owners over forty acres, and I don't think they have that right now.
So who did CSU think should be that, Tom?
They didn't, I mean, Shannon agreed to that, but they, Bill Nobles directed her to serve as a, really as an ex officio member of that board.
Well, that's how Robin actually was.
But not, not as a county weed director.
It's a big deal, I know that, CCIG guy.
That was part of her expertise, I mean, she was really very, very knowledgeable.
She may not, no matter what.
So we'll have to...
What does Shannon think, should she be then or not?
She doesn't mind being on the board as a member, but certainly is not going to be in a position to chair that board, direct that effort, so. And again, I'll let Shannon speak to that, I got an email from her yesterday about an area director that is not inclined to take on Custer County.
What are you thinking, Tom, are you thinking, should we temporarily...
No, I don't think so, I think we're gonna have to find somebody, we'll get this board fired up, and I would think then ask if any of those members want to step up in that leadership role, or not, I think we're gonna have to find somebody. You know, I don't know that it has to be somebody that's a technical expert in the beginning, they can learn that, just as Robin did, I think it's, it can be a process, but I don't, I really don't see Shannon being in the role that our previous extension director was, so keep them directed not to do that. I don't know if we're gonna throw some money at that position, I'd love to find somebody who has a real desire for that, would volunteer to do that, so that, that would be my preference.
You don't want to set a precedent, I don't know what the other counties do with that.
Well, they cost share, typically they cost share in directing, but, again, let's have a conversation with Shannon later, and then move forward from there, would be my record issue. Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, good, thank you. Administrative Assistant, any items, Ms. Brenda?
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into staff reports, my golly, we're a little ahead of the curve this morning.
Shoot.
Oh, that's good. We'll start with Rod and Bridge, Mr. Hyde. How are you, sir? Good morning.
Good morning, good to see ya. Bye, sir.
Good morning. Been out digging in the cold out there.
Well, I went out to, I went out to Herlen, I picked up my traffic counter, and unfortunately it malfunctioned, so I don't have...
So I'm gonna scratch what I was gonna ask you about that?
Yeah, I was really disappointed, it's almost like getting a Christmas morning and opening up the left and nothing, being in the box.
Pair of socks.
Yeah, so I'm gonna have to figure out what my glitch is on that thing, so...
You had it out once before, too, right?
Yeah, and then the snow interrupted my traffic counter, you know, we were predicted to get some snow, and I didn't want to see if you'd been a cloud or something.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Tried to back out, but this time it's just malfunctioned. Before I forget this, it's a signature sheet that we've got to turn into a seat on for our UTEF ones, and you have to update that every year, and then get Commissioner's signatures on it.
All three, yeah?
Oh, yes.
Lots of Commissioners, we better get some more.
Slots for ten of them.
Five, ain't we? No passive, five, but we didn't have the changes this year, so we'll just submit that. Safety meetings, after we spoke last time, four weeks ago approximately, I gave that more thought, and I felt like, I think Tom mentioned that one time, you know, possibly having those as often as one week, or part every week, and so I, I thought that's probably a good idea, so that's, that's what we're doing now, every Monday morning, we have a safety meeting, and usually lasts anywhere from about twenty or forty minutes, we typically show a film or two, and then we discuss that film, and then we get to talk every week, and this is, this is the first meeting that we've had, I've got a signature sheet on there that, you know, well, it's basically an attendance sheet that has everyone's names.
Excellent, help the county if there is an incident that, you know, they've been trained, and hopefully that will reduce that, I think that's great to you, I appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, outstanding, thank you. And then these, these were the topics that you addressed on that particular day?
Mm-hmm, it's got the topic on there, what we've discussed, and then my resource, as far as I am getting my videos, so I'm not gonna be feeding anything in, document, I'm gonna scrap it.
Yeah, outstanding, thank you for doing that. I think we will reap the benefits of that, not only because we're gonna work safer, but obviously we'll have some strategies in place if we end up in some issues. What time typically do you try to start those meetings?
Just shortly after seven, around seven, ten.
Would it be appropriate if any of our, all of us were to visit from time to time and sit in on those, or?
Yeah, that'd be fine with us.
And where do you have them at?
They're a break room, just on the other side of my office.
Can you get everybody in there, huh?
Not barely. It'll be kind of tight, but we can manage.
Can you get the bill at Sam's, excuse me?
Yeah. Yeah, excellent, I commend you for that, sir, thank you for doing it, it's outstanding.
And then, it was mentioned to me at one time, our account of air gas and bottle and rental and things like that, so I've done some research on that, and I did discover that we've got, actually, after talking to air gas, we've got twenty-five, so there's a hundred account, and we've only got seventeen in our possession, so somehow or another, there's...
Including Whitmore?
Including Whitmore, there's, yeah.
Eight bottles. From what I've walked off, huh?
Well, I think that it was...
They lost track, maybe.
Well, I think that's what happened, their paperwork at the air gas office got shuffled around, and they lost track of what we've actually got, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna start an audit on these bottles to find out which ones they don't, yes.
They might find them.
I hope they do, because we don't have, I have a lot of them.
And I'm assuming if they come up and do an audit on those bottles, and their count matches our count of seventeen, then they're gonna take those over eight off the books.
I hope so, they can.
Or if they find them on their records somewhere else, somebody.
That's what they're gonna do, they're gonna go back on records and see where they made a mistake, and hopefully they'll discover something. But they did find out that we're being charged anywhere from seventy to eighty cents per day per bottle, and after doing the crunching of numbers on all this, that I, I found out that for what we're paying rental, these bottles were actually purchased, and the same amount of money can go towards purchasing, so I think, you know, I think that's where it comes.
In the long run, in safety county, that's the way to go.
Yeah, we spent approximately forty-two hundred dollars a year to rent them, and that same money on the bottles, according to Whitmore.
That's a one-time expense.
Yeah, and we don't, and we're gonna rent them, so that's what we're gonna do.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, and to be honest with you, I kind of dropped the ball, I never did anything further as far as snooping around with air gas either, so thank you for doing that, yeah. Do you have some Rusty out at landfill, do you have cutting torch or anything out there? So it's just between you guys and Whitmore, no other departments?
No, there's only more bottles than smoking, other than what we've got.
Rusty be torching off the land.
I wonder, surely there's not a set of bottles on a cart over here in the garage, I just couldn't imagine it, but I don't know that, I haven't been in there.
I was in there, I didn't know, since...
Wouldn't you see in the garage?
Oh, there's a garage right here across the street by the end.
Where the four-wheeler is, or whatever we call it.
Yeah, I know, six-wheelers, yeah, car, it's beautiful, so, I may just stick my head in there to make sure, but I can't imagine, unless the maintenance people have requested one, but...
Tell us the good news on Herman, more or less good news.
Well, it's...
You've been talking to a lot of people.
Yeah, I've been trying to see this on, some prices on some box culverts concrete, but, not this, they're...
Pre-cash?
Yeah, they're not really good about getting back with me. I did get ahold of Brad Puller with Lake County, they actually installed a structure, a structure of similar size to what we're considering getting, and that aluminum box culvert, and they had real good luck with it, they thought that that...
Last one.
Yeah, they thought that was the way to go. The nice thing about it, with galvanized is that the galvanized ever gets scratched, to where it exposes the metal underneath, and you're gonna have less, there are ancient problems, don't have to deal with that with the other.
Do you throw a concrete stand in the front to keep the water from getting under, how do you handle it?
It's actually got a footer, the base of it, this is a four-sided, so it's got a bottom in it, and I've got some pictures, Brad sent me on that, you can take a look.
Are those aluminum box culverts four-sided as well?
They can be, or it can have a live bottom in it, you can put concrete foot, in fact, in the pictures you'll see where they used concrete footers.
I bet, I don't know, my God.
According to Army Corps of Engineer, we could go with a four-sided, we could actually have a bottom in it.
Really?
As long as we put it at the base of the stream, and if there was any, there's, that wanted to go from one end to the other, they could, you just gotta make it pass through. But they had real good luck with it, they did... But they had real good luck with it. They did all of this and they also did it all themselves.
And this is the aluminum over here?
Yeah, and it's actually got um, I don't know if you can see it, for strength. They've actually got ribs that are bolted to the culvert itself also. I mean, they've got the ribs that are part of the structure itself and then they've got additional bits that bolt to it to give it additional strength.
Park the butt. Are they flush with them?
They're actually flush with the ribs themselves.
Is the lifespan the same for aluminum as it is for galvanized?
It's actually better.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Significantly more expensive?
No, it's pretty comparable in price. The uh, the galvanized itself, well, usually they say anywhere from forty to fifty years on it. You know, aluminum, you can probably get anywhere from sixty, eighty, maybe even more, so.
What was that?
It's, yeah, a little bit.
Sounds like a pretty easy decision.
Yes.
And then timing wise, you were thinking maybe uh, four to six weeks, you know, depending on the contractor?
Yeah, well, honestly, I can't imagine any more than four. The contractor's telling me too, but you know, I always wanna add a little bit, you know, if they're ready for something.
Maybe double it, that's still a bargain.
Oh, yeah.
Before we know it.
This box culvert design, uh, this semi-circular thing, that's what you're looking at versus a rectangular opening?
The uh, cubic feet of volume that we've got in there right now with the three six-foot culverts is right around eighty-five cubic feet of volume. And this being the size that it is, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty-four, approximately, so.
Pretty low to water.
And the nice thing about it is it's just one span versus three spans.
You'll get a brush and block and then run into it.
The likelihood of that is almost zero, so.
So you think a hundred and twenty cubic feet on a culvert similar to this?
Uh, a hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, it's twenty foot, uh, twenty-four foot, six foot high. So we're gonna increase our volume by about forty cubic feet.
And you're still working on trying to get a price comparison between pre-cast concrete and this box culvert?
Yeah, I don't wanna rule the box, I mean, the pre-cast out versus that, so I still wanna do a comparison.
How much cover you think would be required to go to the top of that?
Uh, an average of three, you know, two to four.
And the box, same thing, I mean, concrete?
Yeah.
So it doesn't change?
And the box culverts unfortunately will be three spans probably, or at least two versus this fan, similar spans.
Right.
I like the idea of this.
Yeah.
Did you say the aluminum had to be deeper than a galvanized?
Uh, no.
No.
Well, the, the bottom cover over the top, I mean, no, they're actually pretty similar.
Do you have a rough estimate on the cost of this?
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five?
Mm-hmm. That's the quote I got last year. It may have gone up a little bit since then, but uh, we can always adjust the size if we feel like asking it to, to, we can go with a smaller one or whatever, so.
Um, and that includes the wings out front and.
Yeah. Uh, what they just, yeah, that includes all the uh, the wings, the header, the footer, pretty much.
Just not installation.
No, it's, yeah.
And live bar, correct?
Uh, that actually has four-sided live bar, that'd be the ones that are concrete footers.
So the wings are aluminum?
Yeah. And they've got supports to go back to the header and then they've got detonated supports and then also to keep them from giving in, which should go to backfill. Yeah, I was gonna bring up something. We're still in the process of hauling rock out of the ditches out here on Hermant to provide us with some material to crush, or chips hill rock. Rick Morrell contacted us yesterday and he lives west of Tom out here on Hermant. He saw that we were hauling that material. He contacted us and then they built a barn out there four or five years ago. They, when they did their excavation, they ended up, you know what their materials like are. It's got a lot of large rock in it. It's actually as good or better than the material we haul in out of the ditches to supply us with some rock to crush. So anyway, he's probably, he estimated about fifteen tons out there, ten of the truckloads material, but it's more like forty or fifty. There's probably about four hundred tons of material, which is a lot. But anyway, he called me and asked me if we were interested in that, 'cause he didn't have a use for it.
Wanted to give it away?
He wanted to give it away, which would really benefit the county to just ask the material we're gonna be able to crush. So anyway, this forty, I went on a net with Roger and I looked at it and it's ideal material. My only concern is when someone offers material like that, that I don't do anything that's gonna infringe on our contract interest in the county. I don't wanna accept material that they would end up hauling off and being paid defeat for. So that's the thing I asked him and I said, if we didn't haul this material off, what's gonna become of that? He said it will just stay.
Stay there as, ever since you've built a barn, so.
Yeah, so that tells me he's, we're not gonna infringe on our contractor and take money away from them that they would make if they hold it off.
Appreciate you thinking about that.
I, I don't wanna do that, so. Anyway, once he told me that he was just gonna leave the material there, I totally would come and take it, so. That's what we're doing. I want you to be aware, but so if someone drives by and says, hey, Rook County Road and Bridge Department's hauling off of the front, well, that's why the material was.
When we're done with that, would you let us know? 'Cause I think it would be nice if the three of us signed, and you of course, signed a letter of thank you to them.
You sure?
They were eight hundred tons, roughly?
No, I'm guessing an estimate is probably four hundred, depending on the way.
What's the value of that? If you had to buy it, just curious.
So, I would say.
Runs about thirty a ton or not?
No, I know crushed gravel, if we purchase crushed gravel, it runs about seven dollars a ton from Syvers. So if you purchase this, and it's just, it's waste material, so it's, it's three dollars a ton anyways. You're looking at probably about twelve hundred dollars worth of material.
Would, would it cancel move him to, if we made it a donation to the county and then potentially it could be a tax advantage for him doing that?
Uh, that's.
Why does it bring into hand? I don't need to get, I don't need to get taken out, but I mean, I appreciate someone stepping up like that. If there's a small benefit to them, I think it'd be worthwhile.
Yeah, yeah, if you guys have donated items, it's possible. Just like, yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's possible.
Good, just a filler.
Good deal, nice man.
Yeah, I've got a pile in my house as well, but it's probably only three dozen, four dozen.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's convenient, it is what it is, you know, when we're hauling it right now in the front, you know, it's tough that we can get.
And where do you haul that and stockpile it?
We'll take it out of your driveway, we're gonna crush for us.
Oh, so.
Anytime an individual such as a, a citizen offers anything like that, I'll be, be very alert, so that if someone down the street comes to you and says.
Is it muddy? How, how, is it soupy? What kind of, what condition?
Oh, no, it's pretty.
Bone dry?
Bone dry. It's probably got seventy, some, half of it's been grizzed. He's running through a grizzly and it still wouldn't work for what he wanted to use it for, so that's probably got about four or thirty to forty percent rock in it. And the stuff that hadn't been grizzly has got probably uh, seventy-five percent rock in it.
Yeah, I was wondering what the crusher finds and what was left would be useful for it.
Actually, what's left is uh, material that we use through our uh, spreader or our standard truck or.
Put and throw it on them.
Ice, icy roads, but it's real fine material versus buying salt and other, it works no well for that, provides stressions, so.
I had some very positive comments about the work on Willow Road. And I drove up there last night, it was huge improvement. It was dark, so I really couldn't tell where that experiment started and ended or that reclaimed, I don't know if it was asphalt or concrete that we went on there a year or two ago, a couple of years ago.
Is this muddy or, or?
Willow. No, I'm sorry, muddy, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, where that area was pumping, it's some, some very little material in it. Well, actually, the boy came along more and it seemed a little bit different.
Yeah, those people live up there very pretty good.
What are you hearing down on Copper Gulch and Elsie Road, Washport? Down, we have an adlet soon.
Copper Gulch, Copper Gulch is holding up pretty good. We did some work on it just a couple of weeks.
Kind of looking back down there.
Yeah, it's holding up pretty decent. Two fifty-five, Oak Creek Creek, I'd like to step up there and. We've got some spotty waiting to do where some more sports are trying to develop. But uh, I know that we're working on, we did some work on two sixty-four and uh, towards the end of last week, we've got it in pretty good shape. We finished up on it yesterday. We moved over to two sixty-five and then we, a lot of more guys were up here last week and helped us out. They did some work on two seventy-one over here by Bear Basin. And we've got it snuck back up, so.
Do you think they quit hauling?
Uh, I haven't heard of them hauling lately, so they have either tapered off to almost nothing or they don't haul at all.
You give a chance to look at White Castle? I'll do that, call you.
Oh, I did. And what happened was uh, one of my guys uh, did some grave work out there and they uh, pulled the ditches on it. When they did uh, typically what happens in a situation like that, where they pull the ditches and use that material to put on the road, after being driven on for two, three days, some of the rocks will come to the surface and that's what happened to that. And he was in the area doing some work again yesterday, so I just had a good kind of skipper.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Okay, excellent. You know, that's, anything else?
Uh, I don't feel like I can think of that.
Yeah, I wanted to also compliment you on your uh, financials, you might, on your, yeah, your financial page. It's nice to get that and, you know, keep track. And I see that you did not have February uh, populated with your expenses, but I'm assuming when you come in March, you're gonna have February done.
Right, yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, that way as we progress through the year, we get down around October, November, just what we talked about, you know, we could, yeah, we're in good snapshot of it, and so this is where we're at.
Same, I agree, perfect.
And then I looked at fuel report as well. You seem to be the guilty person when it comes to the majority of the fuel, but that's a good thing.
Yeah, I always were doing something, yeah.
That's in gallons, right?
Yeah.
Reports in gallons, right?
Yeah, twenty-six hundred, twenty-seven hundred and sixteen. Yeah, you might just, as a clerical thing, fuel consumption by department or fuel consumption by gallon by department or something, I don't know. You can just add that in there. Um, I went on the same assumption. I was pretty sure it was gallons, but it would be not.
Makes sense, sounds very positive.
Oh, it does, I'm sorry, yeah.
Positive that that's what I was looking for.
I did not uh, notice down there at the bottom of the accounts, please excuse my comments, and so, yeah, that's not such a very usable graph and uh.
I guess one thing that I almost forgot about was the mention of the tower out here at East Town. When we did meet with BLM Roger and I last week, we mentioned to them about the possibility of purchasing that area and they were all for that, but they said their biggest issue right now is personnel. And being able to make a deal like that work, they just don't have the personnel. What they're, and they've had other agencies contact them about purchasing BLM property, such as we did. And what they do is they just put us on the list and somebody if they ever get that.
What's the March twenty-second meeting?
What they told us was.
To meet you up there?
We wanna, we wanna have a meeting with BLM and anybody that owns property up there at that tower. Because they require that there is a uh, a list of agencies that own property up there and they want a uh, they want a uh, an idea of what property is actually being housed up there and utilized up there. And uh, that has come by the wayside in the past. And so they're trying to start fresh and figure out who's got what up there and if there's equipment and property up there that's not being utilized that needs to be copied and done.
And you know about Hibbs Tower?
Yeah, is that what they call it?
Yeah.
I've heard it called three, but it's the one east of town. But anyway, what they related us, well, also was if anybody's putting equipment up there, I've gotten permission to do so, they've decided that it's illegal trespass, they don't wanna do that, so.
By putting equipment up there, you mean putting equipment actually on the towers or at the base of the towers?
Like they have the hand outfits in there.
They're actually doing both. I think there's been agencies coming out there and they put equipment up on the tower.
Are we leasing that ground currently then, or? Getting it from BLM or, I've never seen any paperwork there.
There's a lease agreement that I think last time it was signed, it was in two thousand and sixteen. I got a copy of it.
Yeah.
Do you recall how long that lease is?
It goes on forever.
I think that's what they said too, it was like.
But if we're leasing that, then I don't know what BLM's concerned would be, what equipment's on there. That would be our concern, wouldn't it?
It should be, but well, there's others, there are others, smaller.
Well, they've actually got agreements, not necessarily only with us, but other companies, Sabre, Crystal Electric, and since they've got agreements with them to have the equipment up there, not only us. And actually, what they're trying to do is turn the responsibility over us to get the, who puts equipment up there. And then when it comes to the uh, the list of the equipment up there.
I think we make a good case if we're gonna manage it, we could collect the.
They want us to turn in the inventory and the way on what's up there.
Turn it into them.
Correct. And in fact, Sabre, Crystal Electric would like to give us that hundred-foot tower that they got up there. As long as we provide room for them to keep their equipment on it.
A couple of other smaller towers in there.
Yeah, we've, we've got one up there also, so.
Got one there, three, about three feet.
Yes.
The last time I was out there, there were two towers there.
Yeah, the smaller one, the shorter one is ours and the taller one belongs to Sabre, Sabre, the Crystal Electric. And that's the one they'd like to give us.
So we just need to see what, what your meeting result is on the twenty-second, then we'll figure out how to meet with them and figure out what kind of, I mean, I don't know why they, you know, we've, we've got smarts that can come up with uh, some kind of agreement, they can run through their uh, headquarters or whoever the jurisdictional. We own the road up, which we got straightened out too. We got that Claudia Morris issue, I think, of owning the road, but we gotta resolve the right of way on that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't know that the county does on that road. There is an easement, there's three different easements through there as I understand it, but.
They had one, they signed, Leonard Rice signed it, I guess, from, back in seventy-six, seventy-whatever it was, dedicated as a road, but what, what happened, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and then we get into that whole definition problem and that's, and I think we're gonna have to address that, is what constitutes a road. Uh, who owns the ground underneath the road? And then who's gonna be responsible for maintaining that road?
And BLM's been involved and also according to what they told me, they, maybe some of the situations pretty much changed, but you know, as long as it's BLM property up there, then you know, the public has to have access to that. I mean, since it's been that way as it has, then it's uh, pretty much remains that way.
Well, I think it's just a matter of time before Claudia Morris sits in this chair and questions these very things.
She wants the charges.
About that, so.
Charges some vehicles that get.
For an easement to go across her property.
Thanks, that she owns that road, I don't think she does.
Yes, I think we're gonna have to do some research and find out who does. I started looking into that a little bit. It's gonna take more work to figure out, I, I'm not sure.
I, I mean, there's definitely a right of way, you know, she may own the dirt, but you know, there's certain things are right of way. I'm not sure about the ownership.
And I, I thought there was more ownerships involved than just heard, but I couldn't be wrong.
As far as property?
Yeah, even beyond her property.
I mean, there is, there's one other person up there.
So I think that's looming on the horizon for sure.
Above, so if it's, and above her place, there's another.
Right.
Is that the same thing as TV Hills?
I'm assuming it is. I don't, I heard that name, I've, I've heard that band, bandied about, you know? Yeah, uh, so.
I guess the answer is Clint's gotta get back and see where, where we stand on the legal, 'cause it's vacant on the ground, but it's a right of way through it.
There's definitely a right of way across there. She can't charge for it either way, I mean, she still owns it, it's a.
Right, well.
No, she can't block it, yeah.
Well, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but you know, an individual called me and he gave me a heads up that that was her intention, was to put a game.
Sure, that's what she wanted. I, I sectioned the first meeting she had with him and she did it with Silvercliff. Silvercliff had her take out the pillars that were blocking it.
I see.
And she did that.
Right.
And uh, the road was dedicated and the county took it with a resolution, but I don't know what, what that means.
Do you, did you have a meeting with BLM on the twenty-second? Is that correct?
Uh, without looking at my calendar, I think that's correct, but it's right around that.
And would you like any of your all the commissioners to be there or is it necessary or?
It's not necessary, but if you'd like to be there, that's entirely within the-
You know, fine on going up with Roger or whoever.
And where's that meeting gonna be, do you know?
Up there. On top of the town.
Oh, right.
Unless it's snowing, hailing, freezing, in which case we'll bring hot dogs in.
Well, I'd like to probably sit in on that if it's possible. Um-
I think it would be a good idea.
Although I'm committed to being a pro.
They're gonna just take the inventory, try to clean up who owns what, get the trash in it. We got stuff in the shed that's been there for years.
I heard that was-
Been the, the man.
We have a before-the-fire workshop, before-the-fire workshop in trouble that day, so I probably will not be on it again. But you said your plan and orders. Yeah, I think that's a good thing. Okay, good. All right, sir. Anything else?
Uh, that's all I-
Do you need a couple more phones? Pack around?
Pretty good. Did we ever get our cell phone service approved and taken? We kind of got to go work a bit.
Brenda, you have a question?
Um, do we have, do we need to put it on an agenda to sign that Dole grant, application for the Dole, for Hermit Bridge?
Uh, we will. I'm not sure when.
I think they'd like to see it signed pretty soon, wouldn't they?
I think so, yeah.
And, you know, as far as the scheduling of events, you know, if we go ahead and sign it, we just need to go ahead and let it out for bids.
Yeah, let's get it going so everybody can get planned.
Yeah, I would still recommend we move forward with it and sign it. I don't see any reason why I wouldn't get going and go with it.
We got a management here.
I mean, I have, I have a grant that can be signed at this point in time.
Yeah, we could actually, you know, you're gonna go there. I'm just concerned about once we sign it, we start the clock and we have to move forward, we'll be-
Long as your case is timeline.
Going to the precinct.
It's been hanging out there quite a while.
No, we, you know, we can wait until it's out for bids and that's the next step.
You're comfortable with, you're comfortable with moving ahead on it?
I don't know if we done this before, but I'll just go ahead and just to reiterate, I'll make a motion and we go ahead and we sign the grant with Dole for the project under the roof.
All right. Good, good. The segment to, uh, sign the grant for, with the Department of Local Affairs pertaining to the Hermit Bridge project. Any further discussion?
You want a public comment on this?
Uh, it's a good point. Thank you, yes. And a public comment concerning that, um... It does specify in here, uh...
Is it twelve-month clock?
I think, yes.
It has to be completed by, it has to be certified from the first official, the project itself. And then I think completion, maybe it was like May, June, or May.
Is it, so, takes that long?
We'll all be running out of town on a rail.
That's right. That's my fault.
I mean, it's time to discuss.
Well, when I have contact here with the project, I'm just-
Couple weeks.
Yes.
And I can't imagine people.
And the grant does call for a single forty-foot long four-sided box cover. So I would guess that we would be committed to that. You know, I would think Dole would consider it.
Did they write in or did we?
Well, that was just the information that was presented the very moment we did the initial application, but I'm certain that it can be done.
I would think so. We recommended to you, we looked into it and this has come up or whatever. I would think they would do. Uh, thank you. Yeah, good idea. Any further discussion? Who could get, uh, comments from the public? You know, but I'm getting ready. We're in number procedure mode, all in favor of, uh, signing the grant with Dole for the Hermit Bridge project. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye. Motion carried.
Brenda, do they just want one copy with the original signatures?
Yes. Uh, I mean, we could send two if we want an original signature one back, but they'll send us a photo copy if we don't care.
And we're okay with just having a photo copy. In fact, we could probably make that now and-
Yeah, I'll make a copy.
But if you wouldn't, I might go over.
Sure. I got the address and I'll send the email.
Look at that door. Looks filed today.
Yeah.
Go for it. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm so happy we're finally really following on this thing. We've talked about it forever. I'm just concerned some may have any trust. That's what I'm worried about.
Good. All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
All your words. Thanks for your reports. Uh, they're informative and, of course, they help. Thank you.
Can you bring that?
Next on the agenda would be the landfill.
Landlord.
And recycle agents.
Sorry to throw that out.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good seeing you.
I didn't get the orange memo.
Thank you for coming in.
You and Gary.
Yeah. I kinda missed this one. I've seen that compactor out. What a mess that job was. But we do have it down at Road and Bridge. We got the old income cleaned up and ready.
Good. Gotta rotate your report here three times.
I just did that.
I don't know why that comes out.
I mean, man, I just grabbed it and there it was.
And I think we actually had part of the coffee tuned in with you. Okay.
Thanks, Brenda.
Yes.
So we're a little ahead of where we were last year as far as revenue. Sixty-four thousand, I didn't do this. So we're a little bit ahead.
Good.
Only thanks. Second page of this last year.
Without, um, it's on your post. I think I mentioned to you that I invited Beth Lance from Officer Eight of House of Government. She's been coming along. I tried to come today, unfortunately, I didn't work.
What's on her mind?
She's money. I like to, you know, she said that whenever she and her family go on vacation, they have to go check out the landfill. She lives, she brings landfills. But what, what Officer could do is she could help us get money, grants and stuff like that. So, um, I, I thought it'd be a good idea if we can get all together, just to start discussing, sir, our landfill.
And, and exit the property if you want to contribute.
For me, two, eight, four. Yeah, she's, she's, that's her.
Yeah, she's pretty good.
I hope you don't mind me doing that. I, I didn't wanna go behind your back, but I know anything I said, you could come talk to us about it.
I know that, so, that's all good.
I'm just gonna get-
The way they're doing those trash products.
I was gonna get all official and write a letter to you and your crew. Didn't happen, but I wanted to express my appreciation and, and I think I can speak for the commissioners about, you know, one, the appearance of the landfill. And we routed on that site tour. And I remember in the old days, you could see trash blowing all over that place and across the road and into the fences. And I just did not see any of that. And I was very impressed. I just wanted, thank you for how that looks out there.
It does happen. Sure, I love it when you can-
But apparently you mitigated what it does because, uh, I just thought the, the whole place looked great. It was clean, well organized and-
Buy that property right across your house. You claim that you're building.
Across the, across the theater.
Yeah. If scrap steel price ever came back, that would be, but, uh, yeah, I just wanted to compliment you and please pass it on to your employees out there because-
Biggie formed here.
Yeah, it looked good. It looked really good. The equipment looked good. It was clean and, uh, I just, I just thought that was, yeah, outstanding.
So what do you need that we're not providing for you? How can we help you do your job better?
Well, I think we're actually in pretty good shape right now. When, uh, Road and Bridge gets that back, when we get that other back, I know it's gonna help too, just have another bucket out there, even though it's small. At least we could probably go run through the, some of the other material with it. You can, two little drive, yeah. But it'll help.
Yeah, absolutely. We're good.
For sure. I don't know when they're getting that back, but we don't-
I haven't heard and I didn't ask this morning, so I don't know what the plan is and every miss and that. And you get your tires through Road and Bridge?
Actually, just got them to G C R, the same place that Road and Bridge gets their tires from. So that's all taken care of. Transmission for the loads, all taken care of. The engine for the compactors getting installed, so we are gaining.
Good.
Actually.
Okay.
I don't know, I have for a great deal.
Okay, a question.
Oh, and cardboard is a hundred dollars a ton, so that's down quite a bit. And we have enough bales for a load. I hate to see it go down any farther than the price, so we might go ahead and get a truck and, uh, get a little shit down.
You got enough to make a load?
Yeah.
Most like it.
Yeah, 'cause we, you know, depending on the trail, we'll put between forty-six and fifty bales on, so.
So we have a second one. There's a question that's kind of bothering me a bit. Keep the bales outside in rain once a year, however, not very often. But when it does, the carpet gets a little wet. Is that to our advantage? Cause do we sell it for more money? Cause they're heavier?
I always thought, I always thought, yeah, let it rain. It goes a little, little pain in the ass a little bit, but now it doesn't. As you go, we've had, uh, after a big, even last summer when we had all that rain and we had a load go out. And so we brought it over the scales and weighed it. We had to come, how we can go back to the landfill and kick four bales off because it was too heavy.
Uh, okay.
So, yeah, not much to watch.
Walking around the other day, I was looking at that going, we could make some money if we wait till it rains real hard. Okay.
Okay. Anything else, sir? He's got new shoes.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask. Maybe keep your boots on. So could work on that.
I was just a big hour yesterday, but-
Another day a minute ago, but bad. And I didn't pay attention. Do you have fuel tank out there at the landfill?
Diesel, yeah. Thousand-gallon diesel tank and a five-hundred gas tank.
Sitting out there, I buy them, keep going to the brush pile.
And our, we, Road and Bridge hauls for you?
Fuel?
Bring that directly?
Yeah, we buy it from McFarland, get fuel and, uh, so I don't, always have. They were close. Actually, we had Chris Hager doing that when we had his truck at one point. And that kind of stuff, so.
Are we, uh, I'm just asking so I can know, are we putting out for bids fuel and tires from you guys?
Road and Bridge does, I'm sure, for tires and fuel. And, um, we've just always used McFarland.
The same.
Yeah, from Salida.
So Road and Bridge doesn't use them? They, they don't come up?
Yeah, they actually use them for their pit too.
So they make a trip, fill both tanks. And a gallon, that's five hundred a gallon. Is that what I was saying?
Diesel is thousand.
Or thousands, right?
Yeah. Gas is a fuckin' go of ten. I don't know. Never fill it up because it'll get used and go bad the way fuel is these days. It's capacitating through that, so it won't last long like it used to.
Yeah, I had a citizen ask me if we were buying fuel and tires on bids. Still wonder if that's something we can look at.
Yeah. You know, I don't know who else comes up with fuel unless it's Acorn.
They are. Acorn used to. I don't know. I've seen them on there.
Little small truck that they come around and fill. I wonder who the ranchers around using. Cause he was at McFarland or anybody else.
Our local gas stations don't have the ability to bid and deliver.
Right, but nobody has a truck anymore up there. Be a good business for somebody actually.
All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
You guys have a good rest.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Thanks.
You got it.
Mr. Brenda, we have Dawn on standby, correct? I, I just, hear me out before you call her, please. If you don't mind, I'd like to just take a couple minute break and then can we rope her below extension or if you think she's-
She, I don't think she can. Just call her.
Can we just take a few minute recess, please? Thank you, sir. Call the meeting back to order. Uh, we'll proceed with our agenda. Uh, we're gonna roll HR finance down, so we would like to welcome our new extension director, Miss Shannon Off, for her very first report ever. And no.
We did have a transition that the first time you're here, you bring the bill, that's pretty good.
I don't even know where to start around here.
You know?
And I just, have you officially met?
Are you gonna do some children?
We just all met.
Okay, you did, okay, and Bill as well, I'm sorry. Okay, good, thank you, yeah, welcome, thanks for being here, thanks for giving us that report ahead of time. I'll put my copy up real quick.
Um, I did change one thing on the, just the date for that special fair board meeting.
Uh, yes, okay, uh, and can we just talk about that real quick, so I need to get it on the record if you don't mind. Um, let me see, I don't see that.
That's the second bullet from the bottom on that first list of fair board slash four H items.
It's not March twenty-sixth?
It's not March twenty-sixth, that's the regular fair board meeting. Um, so we're, they scheduled a special fair board meeting on March nineteenth for Bill Baker. So he can address his concerns.
So we just scratched twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
And slide into nineteenth, so, um, Diane Rose contacted me and asked me if I would mediate that meeting and I told her that I would. So it is on March nineteenth at the Silver Cliff Town Hall at five thirty in the evening, so for you gentlemen's information, I perceive that to be sending some minimal rules, discussion and debate and my question to people to adhere to that would be my role as I, I look at that. I uh started doing some research and putting together some information for that meeting, so I'll report back to you about that.
Uh, okay, so the fair entry software is an online program that's used to register the indoor projects and the livestock. And um the fair board was concerned uh because of the large cost to such a small county, because it would have been three hundred dollars for us to register and use that software. Um, but I spoke to my mentoring, um, extension agent and C S U, who both confirmed that we are not required, though the language says it's mandatory, that's a little loose. Um, so we only, we can use it to register the indoor projects and bring livestock going to the state fair. Um, that's not requiring any payment. Um, the surrounding counties said that you really have to have great Wi-Fi service at your fairgrounds to be able to use it, which my understanding is we don't, um, so, good news, we don't have to worry about that.
And under what, the rules of engagement are we not required to use that fair entry software? Because we're a small county, because we don't have great Wi-Fi? How do they determine that we're not gonna be required to use it?
So. Um, so Mark Platten in Teller County is in a similar situation, um, and he's, they don't have very good Wi-Fi. Um, they're not a very large county and both of those reasons, um, qualify them to not have to pay for it.
So how do you give it to them? Hard copy, something, how to get in it?
We can still use it to enter them, we can enter them here before we ever go over, or we can enter it when we come back from the fair.
After the fact?
And then submit it?
And then we just submit it, so we can still submit everything online, it just doesn't require payment.
Got it.
Uh, that's cool, yes.
So that's that. Um, the rulebook for the fair for twenty eighteen, um, the first draft is done, we reviewed that a little bit in the fair board meeting last month. Um, I put that together and I'm working on the second draft with the edits that were given to me. And then everyone's supposed to be working on some edits, so they'll be giving me a second copy at the fair board meeting on the twenty-sixth. So we'll get that done. Um, most of the things in there are the same, just some of the four H updates on the different projects and of course, the dates and the times, anything that's changed there for the judges and um so on and so forth there. Uh, but in terms of any policy changes, uh, we updated the code of conduct wording and then they also requested that I come up with an anti-cyberbullying policy, so I wrote that up and they're reviewing that, but I have a copy of, if you guys want a copy of that. Um, Leah Coleman asked me to change the wording so that this clearly applies for H and S F A. And then, um, the code of conduct is being signed by all participants, their parents and the volunteers at the fair. So this will be too, and this will be in the fair book. Um, the fair board's trying to decide if they want this to be passed out separately and have it signed or if having it in the fair book is enough. My personal opinion is to get this signed, um, because there's nothing to sign in the fair book, just to make sure, just. Uh, and then this would be amended into the future code of conduct for use next season.
Or they did.
What's that?
Who invented that?
The cyberbullying policy, I took it from other four H websites and the C S U page and I just put it together.
I personally agree with you, just I'm concurring that I like the idea of the participants signing it, that way they can't say, well, I didn't see it. You know, they can all, it's more accountable to them, so I concur with you.
Okay, I know it's a pain to have another form signed, but if, if nothing else, we can get them at registration.
Great.
So that's that, and I'll leave a copy with.
Good job there.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, capital improvements, uh, we talked about that at the fair board meeting, um, because there are some problems with the buildings over at the fairgrounds. Uh, I was told there were issues with the pigs getting out and some leaks. So, um, Cheryl Laramore is heading up a subcommittee for capital improvements, trying to determine what grants were eligible for to see what we might be able to get. Um, there was a little confusion because of the Saddle Club ownership versus county ownership and when we looked at the property lines, it appeared that part of the livestock buildings were on county property instead of Saddle Club property. But when I went to the assessors office, we're not sure that that's the case because that's not the wording in the paperwork. So I, I relate that to Cheryl so that she can look at, um, the specific grants that we might be eligible for.
I spoke to J D about that as well. He's comfortable with, uh, those buildings being on the property. Uh, he's more comfortable with the actual buildings being where they're supposed to than what the map really shows.
Yeah, they said that the lines were just stretched a little bit, so they're not a hundred percent accurate when you look at them, but the paperwork is. Uh, we had the project fair over at the school on the twenty-seventh of February and, um, I think it was a huge success. Uh, we had eight new enrollments right then and there at the fair, um, and then we had an additional five come in between the twenty-seventh and the first. Um, and so with the, we had, I think, about sixty-nine participants signed up before the fair and eighty-three afterward. So I mean, it's almost nineteen percent increase in a few days. So I thought that was pretty amazing. And Brianna, or Brianna, um, she headed that up, so she wants to make that an annual event. So she's gonna pitch that to the fair board.
How many different kinds of projects were there?
Different kinds?
Yeah. Thirty, forty, ten?
I'd say a couple dozen.
That's good.
Um, they were sending it for all areas, we had all kinds of kids coming in gung ho to go get a steer and we had to, you know, explain to them, we're a little past that due date, so we were encouraging them to start small or start with some of their other interests, like the indoor projects, things that they, we knew that they can succeed in this year, um, without too much, uh, too much of an undertaking on their or their parents' ones.
The paper shows that a ski is sold for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, everybody wants to put a steer in.
Yeah, we had a few, I think a few new families to the county and a couple little girls, they just said, we really wanna show a cow. And, um, I said, I know, and so we walked through everything and I think we got them to sign up for photography or cake decorating, something else they really liked. So, uh, there's that.
And get a steer or decorate a cake.
Yeah, there you go, a big monster cake, I don't know. Um, and, uh, and then another thing we're gonna push, I didn't actually put on this report, uh, but Brianna and I were talking about the open division and trying to get more of the community involved, um, in participating, um, and entering their projects. So, um, she's gonna pitch that to the fair board, too, I helped her with the flyer for that. So hopefully we'll get a lot of people, all ages come in and showing off their own photography or cakes or whatever else things are interested in. Um, let's see, are you, so we already talked about March nineteenth.
Let me just throw in, that is a special, they called that as a special meeting, you know, that I'm ready for the four H on the nineteenth.
Uh, let's see, we had the M Q A, P Q A certifications on the first, um, over at the Saddle Club. We had thirty-eight kids attend that with their parents. Um, it went really well, uh, the guys from, uh, Burlington, Burlington? Burlington, uh, they were great, their displays were pretty awesome. Um, and they put on a good little show for the kids with the injection demonstrations. Uh, but all the kids passed, they did really well, um, and I think they had a pretty good time, too. That's that, the parents were there, they were very supportive, going around with the kids and helping out. And all of us, gotten to all myself, Diana, we jumped right in, helping them find answers.
And can you tell us M Q A and P Q A, please?
Meet quality assurance and for quality assurance, um, which is required for any participant showing livestock, any type of livestock, no. Um, all right, I think I already mentioned the code of conduct, uh, so that exists. The wording in the code of conduct that we have upstairs says for four H. Um, but again, I talked to Leah Coleman, who's the F A advisor act teacher for the school, and she asked me to go ahead and amend it so that we have one form we can pass out to everyone. It looks the same, they've seen it before, um, and again, that would apply to volunteers and parents as well. So we're updating that, we'll get this approval for center bullying at the end of this month and we'll have a whole new code of conduct.
And my volunteers, you're including leaders, superintendents?
Everyone.
We're not done with that yet.
Okay, that's sort.
Um, let's see, so just a few other things that don't apply to those categories, I guess. Um, I'm still trying to plan, like a meet your extension agent or teach your extension agent about Custer County. I'm trying to get that together here in the next couple of weeks, so as soon as I do, I'll update you, I'll probably ask for a little bit of guidance there. Um, and that way we can get that out, I know that Tracy Ballard asked me to update her. Um, so we'll get that out there and hopefully we can get a lot of people in. I know a lot of people are a little apprehensive to come in, who's this new girl? Um, what's going on? People have been kind of coming in gradually, but this way, hopefully we can get everyone together, um, and I can get to know a lot of the community as well and see what.
You know, I think maybe an open house down to Golden Alley or something like that, if appropriate.
Just make sure both people.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting that into the tape room and getting the word put out. Uh, I think it would, I think, I do have good response to that, so I'll certainly work with you.
Okay.
You will be expected to dress up, though.
This is Custer County.
If my stuff ever gets here from Virginia, I promise you I will. They, they got me to buy tickets to that dance on Friday and I said, well, I hope I have something to wear and the kids all told me, you can come in your overalls, it's okay.
We all wear jeans, please don't dress up. You'll make us all look bad.
This is not a Chinese tie, it's a Cuscatan tie. We used to not wear ties either, but I'm not blaming anybody.
No, that's not to know.
I'm definitely not a big fan of dressing myself, but every time I do, I just get dirty.
All the Shannon stuff is still on the truck or in storage.
Yes.
So, been here almost two weeks and still wearing it.
I've been here twenty-one days and.
Are we treating you okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, 'cause we're just.
Not having any issues here, just with my, everything getting here from the other side.
That's all right, we can't, we can't, but anything else? Now don't punch me.
Appreciate it. Um, let's see, uh, the extension advisory committee, um, I had put on here that we need to discuss that. Uh, Tom and I have already talked about it a little bit, uh, just trying to get contact, points of contact and information. So, uh, Carol Custer's been helping me a lot with that. Um, so I've contacted all the members, told them that I'm ready to get this up and running again. Um, trying to gauge who still wants to participate, um, who's still in the area, uh, et cetera. So, um, I've got some bylaws and last meeting minutes that I'm reviewing and so by the end of the week, I should have a date set up, uh, to get that up and going. Also want to, or going to be working on discussing a new youth foundation program, getting that set up. I don't really have any other information about that, except it's on my to-do list. Um, and I need to get the weed advisory board up and running. And I need contact information for all of the members, I think I've got four, but I'm missing five.
Can you, uh, I'm, I think I've got a couple more to give you, but can you, while I'm doing that, can you talk to us about your conversation with Mr. Nobles concerning the weed advisory board?
Yes, um, I did reach out to Bill Nobles from C S U and, um, I asked him about whether or not the weed advisory board can be under me or if I can serve on that board, um, be a voting member, I also asked him those questions in relation to the fair board. Um, so he did reply back and told me that I should not be a voting member on the fair board or on the weed board, but that I can be an ex officio member. So, uh.
I mean, give advice, give advice.
Mm-hmm. And I can make requests. Uh, so, uh, what that means is that we do need to find, um, a weed director for the county and we need to get the advisory board back up and running. I did reach out to, um, Nick Banks from, I believe is his name, uh, who's the new advisor for, or the new weed director for I can't remember, he's Fremont County, I think he's Fremont.
Yeah.
Um, but he said he has too much on his plate, um, he'd be happy to offer advice, um, when needed, but he could not come and serve full-time on any board here, so, uh, need to look into that.
Yeah, I did get your email pertaining to that, so I'll follow up with that a little bit.
Okay.
Um, Jeff Utheer, representing the Forest Service?
Yes.
Would like to be moved to a ex officio member. He's been put on another weed board for two other counties. Uh, and I told you Roger Gregg will serve, continue to serve on that.
Yes.
So I'll continue to work on helping to get the contact information to the rest of them.
Okay, and then I think I have Bill Donley and Dick Nellie's contact information from this list, but I'm just missing the rest, but you have that list. So we can get that going.
Okay, good.
Um, and then the only other thing I have that isn't on my report, um, I had uh, two members of the community come speak with me yesterday and one of whom is very sensitive to the pesticides and any spraying that goes on. So she asked me if I could continue to keep her updated on when those things would be taking place so she can adjust her schedule. I just don't know who I would contact, so.
What does that mean, just around her place, she doesn't wanna be?
Anywhere in the county.
Because she's allergic.
She has a delayed reaction, is highly allergic.
Yeah, Roger Squires on the board, do we? Roger Squires on the board, the weed advisory board, and Roden Bridge does that, so it would request, probably should go through Roger and Roden Bridge.
Thanks for being such a note to that. I think she had that requested in previous, like past years.
She did. She said that she was informed in the past from the extension agent.
Okay.
So, I told her that I would make sure we offered that information.
Good. Do you have a contact information?
For Roger?
For the lady?
I do, for her, yes. So, if you'd like me to reach out to him, I'm happy to do so, if you just send me his information and then I...
Three seven one twenty-six twenty-eight.
Three seven one twenty-six twenty-eight? And that's seven one then?
As a cell.
I'll get you that email address.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, good.
And that's all I have.
Alright, very good.
I got a general question, just for thinking ahead kinda stuff, thinking about. A little history on West Cliff Stampede, goes back, got into the forties and actually, my grandfather and my uncle started horse racing, they were horse racing before that, back in the nineteen, two nines. But they started this as a thing to get people going and quarter horse racing was a big deal. Then, we had a racetrack, which is still sort of in existence around existing place right now. But it evolved from that and they were instrumental in the saddle, starting the saddle club. And then they were instrumental in bringing in the rodeo. And so, that evolved with time and through the fifties and sixties, it was really, the event was the rodeo. And then the 4H and the livestock show kinda migrated into it. And then we've become a true fair, but it lacks a lot of, you know, and we see a lot of people wanting to do more with other kinds of things like you're doing with projects. All kinds of 4H projects need to be exhibited. And so, we, you know, an exhibit hall that would be, a big barn for other things would be a neat thing. It is strategic planning. I know you're an advisory thing, but we need to think about Fair Board and how it evolves. And why aren't we having other things that get people all excited about county fair? You know, rides, why can't we get a carnival outfit coming once in a while? You know, put it, instead of having it be a pure, be a livestock show and a rodeo only. And it would help get better PR. And we're evolving as a, you know, a lot of things to draw people in. And that's one of the big draws in the valley is this rodeo and the livestock show, but it's much more than that. And it would be fun to get everybody more involved.
So, are you thinking like a country fair?
Yeah, like a regular fair.
That's a really good idea. We had, one come through, county fair, and there was some issues, but eventually, if we do it properly...
Well, sure, you get ahead and get, make sure they're a good kind, you know. And that's kinda fun stuff for little kids to come do instead of just watching a steer get auctioned off.
Cool. Booths for crafters?
Crafts?
That's great.
You know, shooting sports stuff, you know, lots of neat things we could do and make it a real county fair.
The Saddle Club has developed that whole vendor area on their side.
On that side, cut a deal with them, do all that.
As I mentioned, I was thinking that on my way in this morning and I was thinking, I said, "The county fairs that I'm used to..."
You look at the county fairs back in Virginia.
Mm-hmm. Because they do have a lot of similarities, but they also have that carnival aspect, they have the craft exhibitors, vendor booths and...
Wouldn't take much, a three-sided, or just a roof or something to start with for exhibits, something to protect it from the wind. No matter when we end this rodeo, it rains and it blows. Doesn't matter what day it gets.
Good. Anything else, may I get a suggestion?
Um, I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've got a question.
Yes?
Are you commuting from Hartsel?
Hartsel.
Yes.
Daily?
As of yesterday.
That's eighty miles one way, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
You got a place in Hartsel, I thought you were going to Salida.
Um, that's where my fiance's working, he's in Salida. We bought a place up in Hartsel.
You have to shake my hand.
Um, we were staying with Sarah Shields in town for a while, we had some issues with our house when we first got here. But, you know, everyone thinks I'm crazy.
Well, that's...
But let me assure you, it's nothing compared to the commute in Virginia. I live ten miles from work and it took me two hours to get there. At least this is a nice, calm, scenic drive.
They aren't gonna close that road when you have a half inch of snow like they do in Northern Virginia.
Well, right. And for my first two days, we did have some snow up in Hartsel and I thought, "You know what, I think tomorrow, I'll try going the long way through Salida to come in," and ended up not having to. It's just around nine that seems to be a problem.
They don't plug that from, what, seven PM?
Seven to five.
Alright, girl, thank you, appreciate it. Next on our agenda is HR and Finance. Thank you, ma'am, for coming back again.
I locked John back in.
Well, HR.
I'm there, how are you?
How are you this morning?
I owe a tie again, my goodness.
Yeah, once I go through my rough, it'll take another week.
That's a trend, so tomorrow will be my last time.
And I just have, nothing, nothing's changed, nothing's new, and I'm still working on balancing out.
How's your workload? Do you, when you go for work?
So, now you're trying to fire me again like the last time you talked to me?
I'm trying to get your help if you need help, that's all I'm saying. I don't want you to put in way more hours than is appropriate.
And, you know, it is what it is.
Okay.
I don't know what you're asking me.
I'm asking you if you're overworked and if some additional help would help you...
I am not overworked.
Thank you.
Some days, it is overwhelming because of the timing issues, but the rest, I mean, that's where the problem comes in. That's, it's not...
Worried about your health, safety and welfare.
I have an HR issue to discuss, let's see, here, 'cause I just got, did you get this, a copy of this from Civil Rights Division, the gentleman who files complaints against us?
That's a shock.
Yeah, no, this is the one, the last one has been denied again. And I'm gonna give it to you, 'cause you can keep it in your records and I can mention the name, obviously.
And I'll make a copy and send it to CTSI.
Right. And if the commissioner doesn't wanna see that, they should get it, I just opened it just now. You already know which one we're talking about.
I'll find.
Yeah, if you would force a copy of that, that'd be great. Yeah, I do not have any questions or concerns. Okay, very good.
Looks good, sounds good.
I'll go and unlock John out of cell one. Because I literally lock him in.
And I was really just trying to help you.
It's all on the timing.
I guess.
That leaves us with Human Services. Did you call over Brenda?
Nope.
And while we're waiting, we'll make introductions, your Christine?
I am.
My name is Tom Flower.
Thanks, ma'am.
Commissioner Jake Prince, Commissioner and Bill Candace. So, obviously, Christine is with the CTSI insurance pool and she has to be on the agenda, so we'll, we have one more item on our staff reports to go through. And so, we can, we'll take care of that, then we'll move to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and you drove down this morning?
I did.
From Denver?
I did.
How was it?
It was not bad.
Good. No big traffic snarls or?
No.
You started in the south end of Denver or the north end?
Uh, south.
That's right.
You've been here before?
I don't know.
I remember.
Hello, gentlemen, how are you? Talk of the morning.
Talk of the morning. I reached today on, we are so, talk of the morning. Oh, good.
They just can't see me from hiding in here.
You know, that is a nice tie.
Thank you.
Is it new?
No. It's only one that was thrown, it was when the Egyptian exhibit was up in Denver years ago, so it's got little stumps all over.
Oh, is that right? Oh, yes, yeah. Wow, that is...
Well, quit making a big, you know, bad tie because it's gonna be hard to deliver the end of it.
When my daughter got married, I bought new ties for all my boys, 'cause they were at the wedding. And somewhere along the line, I lost a tie. I just don't know what happened to that tie. They all tell me they don't have it, so, I don't know, but whatever. Okay, guys, I just have this wonderful report, as usual, which I am...
Good morning, George.
And how are you?
Happy to meet you, George.
Oh, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Anyhow, I'm working on doing something with the front page of this thing, such a big...
Do you find it, yeah?
Thing. Yeah, but we're working on it and so, we weren't done, so we'll just, next month, hopefully, we're gonna have something more simple, okay? But since it's the beginning of the year, there's nothing out of the ordinary, because this starts in January and we just started with every budget thing, so there's nothing.
So, you're tracking, is what you're saying?
We're tracking, we're good. There's no, absolutely no issue there at all.
Before you move on?
Uh-huh.
I'm trying to get my head around, can I if I got that?
Okay.
I'm a little confused about A and D.
A to the needy disabled.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um...
And we would put that, I don't know, I would try to write all that up and...
Oh, A, B and C.
Old age pension.
Okay.
You have to be...
I can't believe we're still using those words.
I, yeah.
Old age pension.
That's true.
That is true, that's just what it's called.
They're using OAP.
That is true, so we're just...
Well, that's right.
You're in the acronym there, but yeah, we still are, so it's been forever.
In the CSBG?
Community Service Block Grant.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and then Mini Transportation and then Energy Outreach Colorado, the ELC.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright. And then, the next page is the state allocations. And that's something that I, if I can get my report from the state in time, I wanna update this report too. So, I'm gonna see how that goes, okay?
Daycares, eight and a half percent.
Yeah. And that's why I don't like this right now, because it doesn't track, it just tracks how many expenditures they have that month for a provider or whatever, but it doesn't track all of the expenditures that are charged off to them. I don't get that report in time to put it on here. So, that's my issue with this report.
It's the monthly expenditure for daycare, really four hundred and seven thousand dollars?
No, that's the...
You didn't get the...
Oh, you didn't get the new one?
Probably did.
You didn't get the new one, yes. It was emailed.
Did you send that? Yeah.
Send an email and I'll show you, dad. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't open the right one.
No, we apologize, because that even made it out there. It was, we were working on this thing and that was, that was December, but it got, because we were messing with it and sending it out and Tom brought that in, he said...
It's different.
Yeah, he goes, "What the heck?"
Couldn't have spent that much.
No, and I said, "What the heck?" And we looked at it and we're going, "Oh, okay," because we were messing with this allocation. But no, here, this is exact, this is what it is.
Okay, now that makes...
That makes sense, doesn't it? Yes.
Oh, you got it.
This is this one?
Yep, that's correct, one one fifty-five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, okay, alright. Alright, yeah, no, it wasn't that much. That would've been, that would've been something, wouldn't it?
I thought you built a daycare, a story tie and I didn't know what happened.
Yeah. He brought that in to me and I'm like, "What?"
That's my fault for not catching.
Yeah, well, no, I, it's one, when Ron sends them out, sometimes it just got that not sent instead of this and that was all messed up, bam.
You, you meant it.
And then the Community Service Block Grant, we're supposed to get more money, that's the next one I have, I don't know how you had guys have them.
They're out of order.
Yeah, see, I don't know how you get them and so, it's complicated. You know what, you should tell me how you have them and then I could go best.
Well, I got TFAV there.
Okay. TFAV is just what, the amount of product that we have coming in and just for ten of it. We got eggs last night, which was wonderful. We haven't had eggs or anything like that for a while, so that was good. Okay, how many you got? You got, you got the food assistance?
Yeah.
And that, and that just shows how many households we had in the month of January. Yeah, and how many hundred dollar amounts that was processed in there. Okay. And then, do you have, what do you have, Energy Outreach or CSBG?
Energy Outreach.
Okay. Energy Outreach, it just shows how many payments and, you know, there's no county dollars attached to that at all, it just passes through, but we're still doing the work, we have to process it, add, process it, so, but...
So, forty-three percent expended on that line.
Right, right.
Second, well, actually, this doesn't, does this include February or not?
No, this is just for January.
January, that's right.
Yeah, and that's...
Oh, that's October through September.
Yeah, it runs, that's a weird, yeah. Because it's just an energy to help through the winter type thing, but it runs through September, so, we've had quite a few actually, even though we have leaked sometimes, it's leaving us short, you know.
Through September.
Yeah, gotta mess with it, it just can't be normal stuff. And Community Service Block Grant, we have any payments in January, we've had some in February. And they're telling, they're keep telling me that we're gonna get more money, because that's not a whole lot of money.
Much.
No, it's not. And she says that we're gonna get more, but we haven't seen a guess, so...
Typically, what kind of things would that need for?
It pays for emergency things. We use it for rent, we can use it for utilities, we can use it for dental prescriptions, we've also used it to help with appliances, hot water heaters that have gone out. So, we just call, it's called emergency services and I think that's about all that we use it for.
You wouldn't use it for services covered by the program such as daycare?
No, no, because we have that covered and they don't consider that an emergency service or anything else, yeah. We have used it for prescription, somebody cannot afford your meds, they're not on Medicaid and Medicare and kicked in and so, we use it for that. And dental is something that we're seeing, because dental's one of those things that there's not, if, now, they've opened that up a little bit, but when Obamacare came in and so, adults can get some help with dental, but you have to be eligible for Medicaid and some of them are not. And so, we've, we use that, you know, five, six times just for dental. And I've got an application right now out for that and I'm working with the dentist on that, because we have a cap of how much we can do. And sometimes it's really easy, I had, we helped this guy, oh, God, probably a couple months ago, he had to have a couple teeth pulled and he brought me in a nice little thank you card thanking you for helping him get that taken care of, which was really nice, how he came in and brought that in. He did one of these things, he came in and just kinda threw it at me. I thought that was really nice that he wanted extra miles to do that, you know? So, okay. Any questions on that right now? Could you stay forward?[1684.81]
Could ask the same question I ask every, you'd know the question.
I know the question, I do.
Anything unusual, out of place?
No.
Anything that we can do to make it better?
No, no, we're just, uh, gearing up, we're gonna, electronic data, electronic data management system's gonna be coming on board, they're gonna train us on that, how I report to the state on, on our salaries, they're changing that, so we're gonna train you on that, we're just doing a lot of training and stuff, but that's just how that goes, so. But no, I don't have anything out of the ordinary or anything right now. Haven't heard anything on some of the stuff that's in the legislation, on updating the grants, and our, not updating, but increasing the grants, just don't haven't heard anything on that. They did a webinar, they ask our opinion, we tell them, um, pretty much, they just did the webinar to tell us why they thought, why, to explain why they were going to do this, even though they asked us for our input, when we gave it to them, they were pretty much like, "Well, this is why, this is why we're doing it." So, it's like, okay, I don't even know why you bothered to ask us then, but, that's how, that's how that goes, you know? But anyhow, so, I haven't heard anything on that yet, so we will see. They were gonna change up the way the daycare, um, daycare right now, um, daycare providers have a point-of-sale device, TOS, and the providers, or the parents have a card, and they help to swipe the kids in and out. That was supposed to go away, and they were gonna do something else, and that was gonna happen in November. The system wasn't ready, and so, they postponed it, it was supposed to happen, but this month, they've already postponed it again, which is good, because the system is not ready. Please do not ban systems, you know, which they have problems, 'cause when they brought up our, our system that we do all of our programs on, it was not ready, and we had to get this. So, anyhow, they're postponing that, so I'm glad they learned something from past problems, so, but that's what we're grabbing.
How's your staff?
Okay, okay, doing, we got, Stacy's doing all kinds...
What kind of report?
Stacy's doing all kinds of training, she's in training right now, she had to do this, this one we got to do at our office, um, hooked it up to the computer, got, we didn't have a camera, so they sent us a camera, got running it up for us, and so, she's doing that today, so, she's in Linda's office all day, so, Linda took a vacation day, so, she's just not sitting there for a moment, so, so, that's going, so, yep, we're doing, okay.
And is she targeting retirement?
He's in May.
In May.
Yeah.
Thank you for the interview.
Good job.
Thank you. Oh, I expect to see another tie.
Another word.
Well, I give you the one of my voice, but I can't find it, you know, so, there we go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, we'll see you later. We did a great job.
Thanks, ma'am, you know. Uh, we'll move on to old business, uh, can I just print yours?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Um, a few sessions ago, I, I asked about, maybe as Mr. Ryan Carr, on a, asking you to basis, could they underwent more to change the ceiling tile, or minimal types of maintenance things, I don't expect them to do air conditioning, that kind of thing, and we had just said that we would discuss that further, so, when I was down there speaking with them, they asked how that was coming, I told them I brought it back up, and so, um, I, I would like to, uh, request that, um, we allow, um, Ed to go down there, and, you know, if he feels that something beyond his capability, I'll just prove it without, I'm certainly not trying to make him into an H D A C man, uh, but some of the small things, you know, they complained about things that come on glue, and they have to glue back in, and stuff like that, I said, you know, there are not a lot of young people on that board, you know where I am, so, they're not actually getting it on their hands at ease. So, I just wanted to bring that back up, 'cause I didn't want it to die, and it prompts the folks down there that, um, we do that.
Yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable, I guess my first question or concern would be, uh, frequency, you know, I don't think you need them running down there every third or fourth day to address a single issue, but if we could say...
Exactly, what I thought we would do is, you know, as many, you know, make three or four items, and go down a couple hours, and handle a couple of my air change lightbulbs and things like that, um, so, if you're okay with that, and if that's okay with, I mean, I feel it'd be appropriate to re, if you use this as a vehicle, obviously, to reverse into the mileage, um, if you're okay with that, I'd like to tell them, give them the form, I mean, I'm familiar with it, and say, you know, would you kind of, uh, you know, fill out, let's say, several items, so it doesn't make multiple trips, and, uh, give them a call when you're ready, if that's okay with you guys. Is there, has there anybody ever been down there, Jane, that lives down there, that has helped them do that kind of stuff, which might be easier? You know, there, there are, for example, a man's husband, and I wish I could think of his name, he's, he's probably in his early forties, and he's...
Courtney, yeah, Courtney.
Really wonderful young man, he hung the banner, he does a lot of stuff, but, I mean, it's, it's a volunteer type thing, and I told him, I said, "Volunteers are wonderful, but if something needs to get done, you know, it's not fair to continuously keep paying the volunteers," so, I don't know, he's been doing a lot, and I just wondered, you know, what it's gonna cost, whatever X dollars it is to go up and down, and then, and then, time on Ed here, it's just, maybe there's a cost wash, and it'd be simpler, and, I don't know, I just, I don't know. You know, if you would entertain, maybe, I could ask Courtney if he'd be interested in, you know, maybe putting in an expense account of ten dollars an hour, something whatever, as a re, whatever reasonable, we could reverse something, doing that, and we'd like to have to use that, because I agree with you, it's a, it's an isolated community that we're responsible for, it has an issue with that at any time. And that, that's right, it's something, you know, we got sink flooded here at the same time it's going down there, you know, I mean, just keep it simple. I know, I think your point's well taken, I don't have a problem with that, if you don't.
Yeah, I think he can work the work, I, I certainly agree with the fact that we need to be reminded that that is our responsibility, just like any other building up here would be, so, uh, if we have to...
That's a county, not a valley.
If we have to budget for him to go down there and deal with it, I'm okay with that, if we can find somebody down there that's willing to do that.
Well, I'd approach that with him, I'll be talking to him in the next couple days. A little outreach down there. I mean, I guess, if that's something he would consider, if he would, I, I, you know, I, I think, he does it for free now, I think if we said we'd be happy to reverse it for some of the things, it'd be wonderful. It's four hours, so... My question would be... Be less than mine. From an H R standpoint, I guess it'd just be a contract, I mean... What do we do with Ed?
Well, he's salarying, salarying for you. For somebody like that, I'd say, "Yeah, we're approaching a contract labor," so...
Yeah, let me, let me, let me approach and see if he has that, that's an excellent idea, let me, let me approach him with that subject and see how he feels, and maybe he's not direct, maybe someone else... Or somebody, they could scatter around, do the better... I just know him, 'cause he comes on meetings, and I'm usually, so, he's got interviews, he would be interested in making it look nice, then, but, I'll, I'll follow up, and then I'll report back.
Yeah, I've got that form, you want me to send it to you?
Would you email?
And then, if we get to that point, it'd be nice if they could record that, if Ed is gonna go down there, they could shoot you or myself, either one of them matter, and we could print them off, give them to Ed, so he knows, and says, "Oh, I need a little electrical stuff, I need a little drywall material, take with me."
And I told him, you know, in an emergency, there's a water main break, you can plum to there ASAP, or call me as you're doing that, so, no, that's fine, if you email this to me, I'd be great.
I'll do that right now.
Someone local, and, good plan, I just don't wanna leave him hanging out there.
No, nor should we, you know.
Thank you.
I'll be just a second, I'll do that right now.
You do, with your chances, not a problem. Or I could skip that one in.
No, I don't, I don't, okay, anything else under the old business, gentlemen?
Oh, I don't.
Ken, that's a little... Nor do I. Someone along the new business, we'd welcome Christine Stanley from CTSI, here to give us an, an update on insurance.
Nice to meet you.
How are you? Pleasure to meet you.
Hey, do you want to be here for a seat? Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of things to present. First, this is a certificate, uh, that you can frame post, uh, basically shows you're standing within, um, the insurance pools, and along with that, we also have a plaque to show your membership and owner of the pools as well, so...
Thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. So, before you, you have the folder that contains the loss analysis for both the cap and the workers' comp pool. The left-hand side is the cap, which is the casualty auto property pool, and that's where we will start first. This first page shows, is a representation of your county for the last five years, and you can see where it's trending, and that determines your loss factor, that determines your contribution amount. So, in November, you guys have received this book, it's yellow and blue, and that determines in there, it's your loss factor, and then the contribution amount, and how all of that boils down. So, you can see that you've been trending, you've been trending well, your factoring, your contribution amount is factored off of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, so, your contribution amount this year was taking most of the years into effect, so, ideally, we would like anything under a hundred percent, a hundred percent means we're not tapping into equity, so, which you guys, you can see our graph, you guys are doing really well there.
The next one?
Uh, folders? Oh, sorry, great, anything? So, you have, uh, one of the lowest loss factors, and, that we offer for this upcoming year. The forecasting for next year, what you can look at is fourteen, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, so, you're still, you're still within a pretty good range there, and that's one of the benefits of the pool, is that it's a lagging indicator, it's lagging that it takes the last five years, but then it takes the latest of those, those five years, the latest three, and, so you can kinda get an idea of where you are, so you're not going to, it kind of helps you with those ebbs and flows of, you know, any claims that do come in. Do you guys have any questions on this first page?
It's looking pretty good, it's going down.
Yeah, doing really well. So, this next page is how the, the cap pool is doing as a whole, so, all of the counties that are members of the cap pool, you can see where they're, so again, anything under a hundred percent, uh, that is equity, that comes back to you by way of equity returns and fee discounts. Anything over a hundred percent means that it tapped into equity, so you can see that we do have that one spike in two thousand and fourteen, that did go over, and, but, everything since then has been trending down, so...
What's it based against, a hundred percent of what?
Uh, contributions, so, of the fifty-one counties that contribute into the cap pool, all of the contributions, and then, any, any claims that go over, that's the hundred percent mark, so, whether the contributions were the same as the money that was, that was paid out.
Okay, so that's for all of them?
Yeah.
So, so, looking at this, it looks like, and tell me why I'm, it doesn't make sense, but, it's to me like, because Custer County is, losses lower than the average, are we supplementing the, the rest of the members?
Um, it's not supplementing exactly, because you can see that, even though you have some years where you're really low, some years you're almost right at a hundred percent too, so, it does take those ebbs and flows, and because it is a community pool, uh, if you do have, and that's where, that's where our job comes in, as CTSI, is looking at where we see those losses, and making those recommendations to the counties that do exceed.
I suppose if you're looking at the cap loss...
Yeah.
Um, the other, the other side, that's ours, that's for our county, Custer, so what is, uh, twenty fifteen, what, why do we approach a hundred percent, we have, of all our stuff that was insured, we lost ninety-eight percent of it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so, in the pages...
Huge problem.
It is, in the pages we have in the back, we'll be able to see, go into, like, the type of claims that we've had, that we experienced.
And there's sixty-four counties in the county, sixty-two of them are member of CCI, and you say you have fifty-one counties participating, so significantly less number than are actually members of CCI.
Yeah, so, Denver Metro, uh, those counties are of their, share their own goals, yeah. But, one of the things I wanted to show, in this, in this graph, with all of the counties in the pool, you can see that it's below a hundred percent, so, you guys are getting a return on that, so not only the equity, uh, is not being, all the contributions are ...
Are you banking the difference between a hundred percent and, and the actual loss?
Yeah, so...
You have, if I remember, you have a huge, in my mind, a huge reserve.
We, we have to have a certain amount of reserve in each pool to have that, but you can see in the, in the blue booklet that you would have received in November at the CCI conference, it has your base contribution.
We all have that in the books we got in the board.
Yeah, so, you'd be able to find your county, and basically, be able to look at how it's being broken down, and you'd be able to see what your contribution amount, it is just taking those factors in, but then you would be able to see that, from the discount, the return of the, the interest income, and then also the equity distribution that was spent the previous, then, that basically takes your contribution savings of about twenty-five thousand dollars.
And can you tell us just briefly what drove the spike in two thousand and fourteen statewide, you know, through those fifty-one counties?
Yeah, so, those, that spike is contributed to several different claims, but the ones that we attributed the spike to were related to an embezzlement employee theft, it was, it was something that we hadn't seen in the years leading up to that, in the history of the pool, we had four claims, so in thirty-plus years, we had four claims, but in that year, we had four claims just in that one year, so, it was something that's...
Bacon claims.
Yeah, and it was things that we didn't, they, some of them had been going on for quite a while, for ten years, but it all just kind of...
Ten years.
So, to answer your, one of the questions that you had in two thousand and fifteen, the next page is the first chart, and it shows, these are all the claims in, over the last five years, so you can see the number of claims and the severity of claims, and in our world, severity equals the dollar amount that was spent out, isn't it?
Incredible, that administration hires and ruins, is that because the number of people in that group?
So, administration is your group, this is, think of it as like the, the, your county, so, this is where your social rights claims are going to take a hit, it's not your admin department.
Okay, I was thinking of our employees falling down and making a workers' comp claim, that kind of thing, I get you, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah, and this is the liability side too, so, this is all...
That makes sense.
Claims coming in from the public, so you may see in the workers' comp side, a little different there.
So, basically, from, excuse me, twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, there's been one public safety claim in four years, is that, and I mean that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
And that was a, a deer, your public safety department had a deer run in, it looks like.
This is county.
Right, so, that was on your top.
This is our county.
Yes. The next page is, the next chart, it breaks down those claims over the last five years, the same ones, but now it breaks it down not by department, but by type of claim, so you can see where, where it kind of fits in there.
This may be kind of an off-the-wall, but are the discrimination claims, it says there were four, they're all from the same person?
I have...
I, I don't really wanna know who it is, I'm just curious if it's all the same person.
I don't believe I have the same...
That's okay.
...that information, what I have are claim numbers...
Okay, that's fine.
...in order to reference back.
All right, that's fine, thank you. What's others, Scotty?
So, those are gonna be anything that has one frequency, so, you may have, like you see, you have three vehicles striking an animal, but you have one jackknife rollover, so that's gonna fall in the, the other category in the top, but it's gonna be down below. You're gonna have, uh, let me see, backing, anything that is a one, with one claim, yeah.
So, these are claims against the county by somebody who got back into it?
Or it's property damage.
How does a deer fall into that?
Because the cap side is your auto side as well, so if there was damage to the vehicle...
Well, sure, but it's a county deer.
A county vehicle.
Yeah.
It's a county vehicle in this case.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we can go both ways.
Right.
Got it.
So, any vehicles we're talking about here are vehicles owned by the county?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
'Cause we could've caused a rollover.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so the rollover one was a county vehicle, the striking an animal, those would be county vehicles as well. Backing could be both, depending on what was backed into. The next page is the backup to how those parts were put together. So you could see-
The vehicle.
Yeah, exactly. So you can see the department, and then you can see the type of claim, and the dollar amounts that were associated with them. One of the things that we're seeing that is almost reaching epidemic proportions is vehicle claims. And, we're seeing that throughout all the, all the counties within the pool, and it's one of the things that we're spending a lot of money in the pool on, whether it's fixing, you know, repairing the county vehicle, or if we're involving other property damages as well. It's, you know, it seems like something that we can, we look at them as, a small portion of them are non-preventable. You may be able to, a deer, you know, may run into the car, even though you have taken precautions. So even though you've attended a defensive driving class, the deer may still strike your car somewhere. But, the other ones that we're seeing are, we're looking at, have we taken defensive driving classes? Yeah, and so we have a really big push right now with all of our counties that are part of the pool, because we are, because it's coming, like you're going, you're seeing it. You're seeing it because what we're seeing is, when we look at the cap side, the prices that we get for excess carriers are charging us more, which in turn is charging all of the counties more. And, you know, like it's, we're just pass-through. So, it's something that, one of the attachments that we have in the folder is the sample fleet safety program. It's something that we have put together that we'd like you to review, and see if it's something that, you know, you would want to institute for your county. Because of the claims that we've had over those last five years, you can see where the animals, or where the vehicle ones come into play, with the liability. So, of your, of the claims that you've had over that last five years, you have had several vehicle ones as well. So, maybe the fleet policy is something to take a look at, maybe a defensive driving course, we like to do those every three years, and based off-
And provide that at no cost, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
I just got an email, I think, today or yesterday, from you about defensive driving. Where is it done?
We can do it wherever, we come to you. And, I can look here to see, I don't, I don't show that we've done a defensive driving class for you over the last five years, unless you're getting, having that done somewhere else. So sometimes law enforcement, your sheriff's department, or your ambulance service, sometimes trying to do it that way, but it is something that we offer as well. We like to-
So let's move right off on that, because it's really intriguing, I see our chairman writing notes too. I would recommend to my companions here that that's something we really want to look at, look into.
Mm-hmm.
What is the best procedure to get that happening? Do we just send an email to you saying we would like to schedule it, and then speak to the ambulance, the fire, and the police, our county police, and that's the best way to handle it? How do we get it up to running, is what I really want to know?
Yeah, just contacting us. We can, we like to break it down, so we have, we have a defensive driving class that focuses on first responders, because the liability, once you turn on those lights, is a little bit different than if you're just in a county car or truck. So, we like to split it out, so if we have first responders, so that class covers the appropriate vehicles.
What's the difference in what you're doing?
Exactly. And then, we have one for cars and trucks, and then we also have one for Ruin Bridge that covers equipment, if you're traveling with motor graders, things like that. Because again, the liability is going to be a little bit different, but they all cover cars and trucks.
But, I like the idea, we should, but I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What data are you looking at that makes it look like it's catastrophic, terrible things that we did? What are you looking at?
We're looking at all of the claims in the cap pool.
In Custer County only, or so, okay.
All of them.
So you see statewide, there is an issue, I want to know if, how we compare to that? Do we have drivers that are out of control, or not?
Uh, a lot of your vehicle claims are related to striking an animal, weather-related, things like that, where there could, without going back to five years and working at each individual claim, there could have been different measures taken, or-
So, the reason I ask the question is, so we can focus whatever you're going to come down, it can be a waste of your time and ours if we're going to go through something that we don't do.
Right, exactly, exactly. Um, we're looking at just any, this is a recommendation that we make for every county that we're making this year, so-
Well, I think it's a great idea, just to get it right.
Yeah, I would guess probably that Shannon is currently involved in some kind of a defensive driving program, that's what I was making a note about to discuss this with him.
I thought he called-
Didn't he, you went out at the airport?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple months ago.
Shannon being our show.
Okay.
But I made a note to have a discussion with him, and see what he's doing, because it seems like that's, obviously that Ruin Bridge, or the two areas that-
A few years ago, maybe, like seven years ago, our posse, a couple of our posse members had, it was just like bumper cars. You guys came down, had the class, and you've not had a single claim sent at the posse's head, so it was really good.
Posse dragging bumper cars now?
I was scared, I don't know, it was just scary. And, and so it was much better when they realized that they're letting their California wats of what they were driving, and what they were doing, so right at this-
Would you have these figures broken out just for 2017, or no?
I could give you a rough idea here. So- There was the striking a deer happened in 17, vehicle backing happened in 17, and striking, well, I'm assuming it's a deer, striking another animal. So two animals and one backing. Those occurred in 17.
And then, this last page is, since the inception of the pool, you can see where the claims have been, where we're spending our money, where, well, where your money's going, actually, and the type of claims. So you can see where vehicles fall in, not only in the top, the top 10, but the top 20, and how much the dollar amount is associated with it. So, it is something that, you know, like I said, we're, we're putting the sample fleet policy for every county, and we're encouraging defensive driving. And one of the other things that we're looking at too is civil rights, sexual harassment, discrimination, things like that. There seems to be a, you know, that, the climate and the atmosphere right now is kind of a, that's another issue we can see the best. Also in one of our top 10 cap point. So, having those types of, of classes too, just to kind of make sure. Also, depending on where it is in your grant season, your grant time will make a difference if you need to, if you don't already have, like if you don't use us to do that class, and you have somebody else, then, certainly, because we just want to make sure, whether, whether you have us, or you have somebody else do it, we just want to make sure that, you know, we're kind of looking at all of, all of the factors of the claims that we've experienced lately.
Very telling. Good job, the whole county.
Doesn't take much for a gunshot to set us all back, does it?
Oh, no, and, you know, unfortunately, most of those gunshots are almost, like not self-inflicted, but throwing it out.
Accident, shot themselves in the-
Shot themselves, yeah, there you go.
Almost $300, a good coin, highest of any listed. Vehicle striking a vehicle could include a sheriff's vehicle, driving another, forcing another vehicle off the road, ramming a vehicle.
Yep, damage to the, if there was damage inflicted to the sheriff's vehicle, that would be included in there.
Would it include the damage to the other vehicle as well, or no?
Uh, there is a, there is, that's a, that's a good Patty question, but from my understanding, I believe that if the person is doing something illegal, then that's where governmental immunity comes in.
Very telling, so, yeah, that's brutal, that whole gunshot thing.
477 claims for inmate-related, is that inmates who injured police officers, or police officers who injured inmates, or?
So, it's a variety, it's, because this is all how it's being reported to us. So one county may say that a detention officer who, that had, was dealing with a combatant inmate, had an injury, it may be reported as inmate-related, or it may be reported as, uh, there's, there's another, there's another classification that some counties use.
Okay.
So, it just depends on how it's related to us. The inmate-related on the liability side, usually what some of those claims are, that I see are excessive force claims, or it could be something happened to them while they were in custody.
And, just for information for all folks in the audience, we're talking about from 1988 through 2017, from the inception of the pool.
Exactly.
Do you have a board of some kind that adjudicates this, and says that's a valid claim, that's not, how do you enforce it?
So we have, we have our claims department in CTSI that goes through all of the claims, and then Patty who oversees all of that will, if there's any questions, there's managers in each of the cap pools and workers' comp pools, and then Patty oversees all of that. And then, both of the, the board of directors is made up of commissioners from varying counties for each pool, so if there's, you guys are looking at it.
So somebody can dispute the finding, and there's some way to go to the next level?
Yeah, typically, if that was, that was the case, then the liability side typically involves defense, defense, defense costs, so, you know, fighting it through the law process. If there's no more questions on the liability side, you can move over to workers' comp, which is going to be on the right hand side. So here, this first page, again, is your county over the last five years. You can see where you fall. Again, your loss factor is based off of the 13, 14, and 15, so your contribution and for this year would have been, taking those three years into account. For next year, 13's going to fall off, and we're going to do 14, 15, and 16. So you can see where it's going, where it's going to go.
Process.
It's going to be a while before 16 gets dropped off, isn't it?
It is, it is.
And again, any idea about that spike? Certainly significantly greater than-
So the spikes, yeah, absolutely. The spikes could be contributed to either frequency of claims or severity of claims. So it's kind of made up, that spike could be contributed to different things. And it looks like, it looks like it's a severity claim. It looks like in 16, there was one claim that was an ergonomics claim. And if we go over to the graph, we can see the dollar amount that's associated with that. So, even though that department had six claims there and right here, the dollar amount, they're first in blue, down in severity. Yeah. So that, that would have contributed to the spike. And if you look at what your contribution is, so the workers' compensation pool takes your loss factor, which was .07, which was really low, so it puts you in the lowest category, and that puts, that gives you about a $10,000 savings for that. So if you look at your contribution to workers' comp, I think it's, you know, about 85 for that year. The next page with the chart is the same thing, this is the counties over, the counties that are, 52 counties that are in the workers' compensation pool, and-
Same number, 51?
Uh, 52.
52.
And again, anything over 100% is paid out from equity. So you can see that there were a couple of spikes. Those are, sometimes in vehicle claims, which is why we see, what we see in vehicle claims is, sometimes there's not only the property damage, this is going to be on this side, you're also going to have an employee injury, which is going to hit on the workers' comp side. So it's potentially hitting us on both sides there, and because we're seeing such a frequency, a high frequency of those claims, then, you know, that's why we're, we're seeing it as it's hitting both sides, and it's having consequences both ways.
Is Frank Dazora's office calling you often? I'm serious, I mean, do you get ambulances chasing guys, calling you all the time, trying to make claims?
No.
Good.
No.
Good answer, thank you.
So, the first chart, again, kind of breaks down the number of claims, these are workers' comp claims over the last five years, and it breaks it down by departments, you can see which department has the most frequency of, the highest number of claims, but you can see how that relates to, you can have frequency, but that doesn't necessarily really make it at all necessary. Right, so you can have one claim, and typically ergonomic claims can, just like, just like you were making a note of the gunshot, you know, the gunshot, we only had 15, but they were very high in cost, so, sometimes frequency, frequency can be a predictor, but we don't always look at it that way.
So how can we have claims in no-
Denied.
Yeah, they just deny them, that's what they're going down to, or?
Some of them are, are you referring to the two that have the zero dollar amounts? So, those are related to claims that were reported, but didn't have, didn't seek medical care. This next chart breaks it down not by department, but the type of claim, and then the dollar amounts associated with them. So you can see where ergonomics falls in, we look at slip, trips, and falls as ergonomics, we look at it as safety awareness as well, but body mechanics falls into ergonomics. We also, so if you look at slip, trips, and falls, body mechanics, falling or being thrown, lifting, those kind of all fall into that same general ergonomics.
Yeah, it's still rolling away by, 2016, we had a 3%, 86%.
And we have zero right now?
Yeah.
And again, that one claim, you can see.
Right.
Ergonomics- And that will continue to haunt us until probably, what, 2021?
17, 18, 19, yeah. But, when you look at, if you have that spike of one year, like you, like you do here, because it's so low on both sides of it, as long as, as it trends low, then it should, it should not have an effect. And because you have such a, since you're so low there, you should have a wide gap of, you know, even if you, your loss factor went up, you know, like .3, it would still probably keep you in the lowest bucket.
Okay, thank you. I'll sleep a little better, you know, when- I'll sleep a little better, you know.
And then, then again, the next page just shows the backup detail for the, for the graphs, so you can have an idea of department and the type of, type of injury and the dollar amount that were associated.
Overall, you know, what, we got fifty counties and a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar worth of claims, that's not too bad.
Well, I think I hate it very much, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Wait a minute, I had decimal points in my mind, a hundred and ninety-five milli.
From the exception, is that the one you're looking at?
Yes.
That's a long period of time.
Yeah, a long period.
And you can see ergonomics is definitely one of the top end items there, too. So, if you don't have any questions, the things that, the things that we're recommending this year are the civil rights and defensive driving, fleet policy, things like that, so those are, those would be my takeaways for your time for this year. I don't think that, you know, some of it is proactive in nature instead of reactive, and from loss prevention, that's kind of what we, what we strive for.
Civil rights, what are we referring to, I mean, I understand defensive driving makes perfectly great sense, or fair enough, but what do you, what, what kind of claims are civil rights, and what can we do to, to allow those?
So, those are going to be harassment, discrimination, and what is kind of classified as, um, failure to have services, so not being able to communicate in the language that your citizens could communicate in, those types of things, so just making sure that it kind of looks at all of that.
Do you provide any of that civil rights training?
We do, we do. We have an HR specialist, and so depending on her schedule and depending on my schedule, it just depends on which one of us ends up doing it.
We use training from CTSI in the past, I just want to remember, it's all, there's no cost to it, I mean, it's part of our policy, we just need to say hey, come help us?
Yep.
And Dennis taught us a ton of things.
Oh, yeah, he came out here last month, right?
Yep. He came out here multiple times, especially if you're budgeting, I mean, he really taught us how to do it, the commissioners, I'm sure, staff, how to do it, taught the commissioners what we're supposed to do and how to do it, it was great.
Yeah, anything that, uh, CTSI only, if we get involved with grant writing, it's the only thing that would be an additional fee, and that's something that Allen and Dennis, from what I hear, it's like very nominal, so, but everything else is like, you add it.
And I can't remember, does our dues to CCI include CTSI, or is that a separate thing?
It's separate.
Separate. Very good, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I really did.
Hope it was worth your trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you. We'll flip to see who gets to take that home.
We'll have you on the wall.
Well, thank you, Christine, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, do you have something else, Donna, are you good?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you guys, if you ever want to know any of the claims or anything, if you come over, I've got a lot in there, you know, that kind of would be, sometimes it's just one thing and a dumb thing that causes all the money.
And hopefully, if we have an insect claim, you'll come tell us about that.
No, but dog bites, you know, it's big.
I think we have one somewhere along the way, so.
The dog bite thing is, is big.
Again, thank you, Christine, we appreciate you taking the time to drive down here.
Have to send you to that home.
Our next item on the agenda would be public comment, uh, certainly would entertain that at this time, yes, sir?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I better let her know.
You sure?
Yeah. Um, a few weeks ago, Bill, you mentioned something about, um, the documentation for the tourism board requiring, uh, members of the tourism industry being on there.
Free, free guys.
Okay, I was just curious, Jake, if that was something that you're going to turn up with the tourism board?
Um, yeah, it always brought to my attention also about a couple of weeks ago, um, I would need to know who's in that industry and how to move forward on that, I mean, I, I recognize that that's supposed to be on there, but if you can find people in that industry, it's hard to do, so.
Is it from tourism industry as a whole, or specific categories?
The board actually says that they, and they've given the bylaws, it says that they'll have people on there from the tourism industry, and, you know, how you define that, what qualifies for that is, you know, really tough questions to answer.
I wouldn't, I think it's probably, I wouldn't say so, but. I mean, if the tourism board couldn't identify that, we're all in trouble, right?
We have a guy who does websites for tourism, is he in the tourism business, or is he a website developer?
Well, that's right.
He knows the kind of questions that come up. We got, uh, things like the, uh.
Service industry.
Well, that, and we are in town, trying to attract people, um, the railroad gangs, you know, and stuff that attracts people up here.
All aboard West Cliff.
All aboard West Cliff, maybe, I don't know.
We have another meeting coming up, I remember it's after, I got a long term, I'll bring that question up soon.
See what they come up with.
Uh, you, I guess I don't remember, your question stemmed as to the makeup of the board?
Right, well, there's a, there's actually a bylaw, there's resolutions that pretty must be from there and the other.
It's the resolution that it was.
That it was founded by.
Founded by, right, voted on by the public before the bed tax, I think, maybe.
Part of it, maybe the Ben Braxton's guys.
Yeah.
Is it, is it Ben Braxton's or a tourism person?
Oh, I would think so.
Those are the kind of questions that, that become significant, so, but I think the question's there, and I think I'll bring it up, and I'll ask this to one of my. You'll have people that are trying to track people for that, and they have good input back, and it's great to look at. The Trails West Cliff thing, is that tourism?
Trails for all, that'd be tourism.
I'm assuming Trails for all is tourism.
Seen byways, anybody, I've always got stuff, I would think it'd fall under that, but, I would think the tourism board certainly should have the wherewithal to.
And then there's the business, county business, maybe the airport guys, true, you're bringing it away, the little things that are trying to attract tourists, but keep them in here. Um, figure out who the makeup is today.
Great, all right, thank you, sir, for pursuing that, anything else, Jake?
Hello, Mr. Flowers.
How are you?
Uh, hi, gentlemen, John CJ Goble.
Bill Kinnon.
Hi, Bill, nice to meet you.
From the old days.
Mr. Smith.
Coach to Chris.
Jackie, how are you, good to see you, Patty Vaughn, I knew her.
I know.
Brock, back in my chair when you walked.
What was your name?
Uh, John CJ Goble, everybody knows me as CJ, yeah, um, as you know, I'm your neighbor, um, in the old stone house, I bought that stone house in nineteen ninety-six.
Where?
On that door.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, the old stone house, it's known as.
You mean our median?
Uh, not, not, I don't live there, uh, I had to leave the valley about ten years ago due to health, and through the ten years, I've been feeling a bit less better, so I came out here.
You don't look too bad.
Well, it's all internal.
Oh, okay.
You know, like a Cadillac with the engine shut, but, uh, anyway, um, I wanted to see how I did on this trip, and so this is the last day of my trip, and I want to come back to the community, I spent a lot of years here, and, um, what we did was we restored that house and put it on the historical registry with the, called the Mercier House, and, uh, the only association that I was able to have Irene and Stan Francis do, uh, with the association of the courthouse, was that Mrs. Mercier was actually part of the actual groundbreaking of the courthouse, and so, of course, we have records of all of that, uh, through the history, uh, my partner and I have discussed it, and we felt that it would be probably most important to talk to the commissioners or to the county to see if they would want to be interested in this building before, if I had to sell it, and put it out to the public, and, um, I think it's just a neighborly right thing to do, and, um, I was fortunate that we were able to preserve that building, and, uh, so I, I don't know if I need to be on another agenda, or, or is it something that we can?
What are you proposing, that we buy it?
Well, um, one thing is, is that, um, my partner and I, I fixed a lot of buildings here in town, and, and so we wanted to make things better, so we were thinking, even if someone wanted to make a long-term lease down the road, thirty years, or, you know, or something, uh, or buy it, or whatever, I know that, you know, uh, I'm just putting it out there to you, gentlemen, to talk about it and see if there's anything that, that might want to keep that as part of your community in the courthouse, maybe a separate office, but it is kind of a museum.
It is on the historic registry?
Yes, correct.
So, uses would be severely limited, I'm assuming, huh?
No, I didn't do a national registry, I did a state registry, so the state registry level had us do all the outside, exterior, and it was done to their, um, specifications, they came up and said, this is the roofing you do, this is this, and all of that, and so everything on the exterior was approved by them, there was one phase that wasn't finished, and that's the north porch, it was a, kind of like a crown porch there, and, and we didn't, we didn't get to finish that part, but, um, so I, I just, you know, I knew the, on the agenda today was going on, and I stopped in yesterday to see if I could run in to say hi, hello, especially Mr. Flowers, because I know you really well, and, um, but anyway, I wanted to just present that idea, and, and maybe if we go to the, if there's something that you want us to do, or like come up with maybe like an idea or proposal or something and submit it to the county.
Well, I would guess probably that would be, if you want to pursue that, uh, I think that'd be appropriate.
Yeah, at least we can resolve whether or not it's going to stay on the block, you know?
You need to give us sort of a timeline, because we are looking at, um, the future, how we're going to consolidate and change things, and can migrate into the county buildings in a better way for the future, and that could be some of the thinking, but we'd, we'd need to know up here in the great runway to get it leased, sold, or whatever.
Well, the worst case for you guys is I'll be your neighbor, probably in a few years if I stay healthy, and then that's where I'll take my naps on the porch, because that's my favorite building of all my projects in the valley that I did, and, and, uh, pretty soon I'll be the longest owner of, of the history, uh, thirty years Mercier, thirty years Mary Lou, and hopefully I.
Yeah, well, interesting, uh, I just, I guess it was yesterday I left here to go south, and I looked at that house, and I thought, I wonder what is happening?
Well, that's why I came.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to stop in, I mean, there was like a calling or something, I don't.
Interesting, now, where are you living now?
Well, I've been in Temecula, California for the past ten years, and, um.
Do you have another place up here?
Uh, I, yes, I've just cleaned up Silver Cliff former here next to the roadhouse, there was a lot of junk in one of my buildings, and so we just evicted everybody, and I went in, I have a crew that's cleaning that mess up, and then I also own, uh, our partnership owns the three oh seven Main Street next to the West Cliff Town Center, that little blue and white building, that's the only asset that I left, I had to sell the mansion.
You donated to the county?
Well, you know I would, but I, uh, what happened to me health-wise was not a workers' comp case, it was a personal case, and I had no insurance, and so it financially took a toll on me, and, you know, I don't have a problem humbly saying that, you know, it's been a rough road.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, and so, you know, the government, you know, when you file things, they don't work out, and we just move on, and, you know, we're surviving, and I, you know, but I do have twenty-eight screws in my spine.
Oh, gee.
So, but to be here, to be around everybody and here today is a blessing to me, so.
Well, uh, back to your point, I wonder if you're interested, would the board entertain, uh, some kind of a presentation without you having to actually be here, if you were comfortable that, if you're going back to California or whatever in the next thirty days or forty-five days?
Well, I want to come back.
Give him a reason.
Yeah, if we, if we can give me, I do want to come back, uh, I plan to be back in April, and I was talking to Brenda about the calendar, maybe I'll schedule to come back to the next meeting, but I really, there's so much of my life here in this valley, that I really miss it, you know?
Come back, and you need to give us a presentation and you give us options.
Okay, so, it's on the agenda, and then.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, don't you?
Yeah, and if.
I'm in and then, if we have any.
Is it a research?
I would like to watch.
Yeah, never mind, it's, it's, it's.
Be impressed to talk about what would you do with that.
Right.
We're talking about site tour.
Yeah, yeah, maybe we could put that on the agenda, too, and I'll arrange it with Dave Purnell, so if I had a spokesman, and I usually have Dave Purnell help me, because he is my property manager, and I've known him since day one I've brought you.
Okay, very good, well, thank you.
Well, good, I'm glad to see everybody.
It's been a pleasure.
Nice to meet you, Jackie, I'll see you soon, I'm glad to be back.
Well, thank you for coming by, we appreciate it.
See, I'm glad I stayed.
There you go, man. Other public comment? Is there any?
I got a, uh, just a note, if you wanted now.
Go ahead.
The Paco's are going to be delivered next week.
Cool.
The tires we get are shop the best tire product for the price in his store, TCR gets it.
They look great.
A little bit, but enjoying the business, uh, and if you want to know about fuel prices, we can ask him when he comes back for the policy.
Speaking of that, something that kind of torched me while we were talking, while we're still in session, uh, we were talking to Rusty, um, we have a policy on purchasing items, there's a certain cost level, once it's above, you have, I mean, our policy is you have to go out and bid and that kind of stuff, so I would just like to make sure that we're following the policy, that's all I'm concerned about.
Purchasing policy is right on the commissioner's.
And he.
Got to make sure everybody's aware of it, it might not.
Well, that's right, he may be perfectly within the policy, I'm just concerned when he said, oh, we've always bought so long, I hope that's, that's within our policies, it's so hard, it's so long, concerned about.
It's actually, I think purchasing policy is under finance, isn't it, on the website?
Yes.
As we speak, I am looking.
On the right-hand side?
Right-hand side.
Policy management.
Two investments. It's a terrible thing to be that.
If that's a blood and blazing in your mind.
Yeah, not investments. Purchasing and contact, and then site tour?
I can answer all these questions.
There's likely many policies, too many, and you keep going through them, through them, she could buy you better than I could, tell us what it is.
I think it's over five hundred dollars, but I don't remember exactly.
Informal is over five hundred?
Yeah, five hundred to ten thousand, or that's there, you have to get three bids.
We go, we go over ten.
And then an informal written bid makes you.
It's. Yeah, I. That was just a concern I had a while ago, I mean, I, I mean, we're going to, we can't sporadically enforce policy, which you don't, so I think if we're going to have it, we need to enforce it, but, I mean, at least ask our people to follow it.
Well, and, and you know, I'm, I agree with what you're saying, sir, uh, we'd buy a lot of fuel for this county, and if we have three local vendors, well, if, if the Americans, they have not had an opportunity to be involved in that, then I think we're remiss, if they cannot compete because they don't have a way to deliver that fuel, then that's.
What the key really is now, is to.
But I think the policy actually addresses, if there's only one supplier, you don't need to do it, and if there's, you know, maybe circumstances.
And the best overall value, and that, that one is key, that it's the best overall value, even though maybe it costs a little bit more, but you could have it four days sooner, where it would not make a problem, you know, different things along that line that, um, even though it was maybe just needs more, but it would, and it's, and there is local advantage in that listed as well.
And who would determine those things, yourself?
The Board of County Commissioners. But there's a lot of, um, not open-ended, but really it gives you a lot of fees for doing that. that. And then there's even actually one spot in that that shows if we were in an emergency, you guys just make the doggone call right then and there, and it's done, instead of that we bog down and there's been injury or something because of it. So...
Yeah, we've had kind of the same discussion with Office of Emergency Management. I certainly am not up to speed on all the policies that would be in place when it comes to spending money in case of fires and this and that.
I think just they can come by the phone, the guys that are in charge of those areas to make sure they're aware of the policy, and then they come to us when maybe the threshold...
And ordinarily, in the emergencies, when I've been at the IC, I have had a commissioner sign a letter that says $500 per day is the limit. Because ordinarily, when it's that big, you get a declaration, and then it reverses to them, and then we're off the hook. But that way, but always there was always... Kid was always there, and he would sign that, and it was... That was the cap. And anything above that, you had to find that commissioner to ask so that we would not have blackouts and things being ordered without... I know what I did, too. I asked Kid early nights if he would let me have a black copy. He said no. He said no.
Anything else? Hearing no further, business, we've adjourned the meeting. Let the record show that happened at 11:48.
Fifty-two.
I'm sorry, fifty-two. Keep going back.
So those chairs...
Want to know it?
Are an insurance violation.
I mean, are a claim waiting to happen.
Yeah, she was saying ergonomics.
Ergonomic!
Going to sleep.
All of the ones that are worse, so...
Okay, so we're coming back here at two.
Can I be excused from the workshop to set... I was planning on going.
We're not gonna make any decisions.
Are you a personnel person or no?
No, I don't seem to be at all.
So two o'clock it is. The lawyer that handled that lawsuit that Hamilton is a...